Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order the special board meeting Tuesday, September 11th. It's called to order. Roll call, please.
Trustee Williams?
She's out ill. She contacted me.
Okay. Trustee Wilson?
Here.
Trustee Brooks?
You're here, you're coming in late as well.
Trustee McMullin?
Welcome.
Trustee Payton?
Here.
Trustee Oscar Brown?
I haven't heard from him.
Mayor Covington?
Present.
Please join me in a pledge of allegiance. To the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, of equal power, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Are there any general publics for the special meeting?
Is that Stephen?
Are any comments about the, uh, that's on the agenda for the special meeting? Because we're having another one, right, a regular meeting right after this.
Well, yeah, I got something to say about that.
Yes, sir.
About the, I didn't sign in. My name is Johnny Rice. Uh, I'm a little disappointed that, that not enough University Park people were at the meeting last night with the super, the new, the interim superintendent, but, you know, can't expect everybody to show up at the time that they said. Um, I wish they would have did it later so that more people had opportunity to come because a lot of people in University Park travel our, like me, myself, I, I'm all, I work all the way from University Park. Okay? And it's hard for me. I got there late, but I was there. Uh, I find that what they were talking about, uh, troubled me. As much money they want to spend, they can fix what needs to be fixed in the, in the Credit Scott King and Talon. But they, but their decision is making it into these two schools, which I think is ridiculous. You know, uh, I also believe that eventually they gonna make it a K through five school, both of these schools. Eventually, uh, because this is, it's stupid. Uh, I wish, like I said again, I wish more people came, but there were some good questions asked there. Uh, they do have it, they did videotape it. Um, I wish people can get on, go online and look at it, but that's, that's a choice. Uh, I just think the whole concept is ill-advised. I think the original plan that we had, which I was a part of, they should keep it. And that's pretty much all I have to say.
Thank you very much, Mr. Rice. Thank you. Okay, um, um, thank you so much. Um, you know, Mr. Rice, I appreciate your comments at all times. We have met, you and I, and with interim superintendent, and she did tell us first, she said to us, she had tentative date of the 7th of September, that was her tentative date, then later on she came out with the card for those other two days that she had. And then we had a meeting with her, again, myself and trustee Payton, and the first meeting you were in with me and the interim, and then Mr. Payton came, because I asked her what was her final date, because she needs to speak to University Park. And she said that she gave us the 19th of September, it's the only time she had available. So she will be here in University Park on September 19th, and we look forward to that. We look forward to being there, we look forward to her speaking. The board will be here in attendance with our comments and questions. I've already told them to be prepared for the questions and comments. Uh, it's something that I've shared with her also, to let her know that that's just unacceptable for us to lose our school. She knows my part on that. And like I said, we are a different board from the school board. We're totally separate entities, and we have separate rulings, we have separate ways the way we do work and business, and how we do business. So we hope that you be here September 19th, and I do hope, I've been at all the school board meetings, you know that we've been at the school board meetings, and I've been saying it, preaching it for over 20 years, go to the school board meetings, and it's been the way it is. So I hope that someone comes out at the school board, the September 19th, and voice your opinion about University Park, how we feel about it, okay? And I really appreciate your participation and your years of dedication. Okay? Thank you. Anyone else on special meeting? Okay. Thank you now, trustee, um, Oscar Brown is welcome back, sir. We missed you.
Thank you.
Um, and trustee, folks, we knew you were going to...
One last thing, this idea that they're gonna give us a school there, 20 years from now, that's...
Well, that, that's what we need to talk about on the 19th. No worries, no worries. Thank you. Okay, I just want everybody to be prepared to come there to that meeting and voice your opinions and what you have to say seriously.
Oh, they did. They did have a survey. Uh, I left it at home. I was going to bring it to, so that people can, uh, you know, fill it out, a hardback sur, uh, survey.
Well, hopefully they'll bring it to our meeting, and I'm sure it's on their website.
It is on their website.
Okay, so people, please go on and look at it. Okay. Thank you. All right, we will go into the first item, action items. D1, resolution authorizing the execution of standard form of agreement between owner and architect, and an amendment to the agreement to be by and between the village of University Park and Willamette County, Illinois, and Jacob, uh-oh, I'm gonna just, I can't pronounce it, I'll just say R. An AIA and Associates Architects PC for architect service with the relocation of the village hall to the town center. Is there a motion? So moved by trustee Brooks, second by trustee McMullin. Questions, concerns, comments? Hearing none, roll call. Trustee Wilson?
Aye.
Trustee Brooks?
Both aye.
Trustee McMullin?
Both aye.
Trustee Payton?
Aye.
Trustee Oscar Brown?
Aye.
Mayor Covington?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Second item, Mayor Covington. The resolution number is R2018-33. Thank you very much. D2, resolution of the village of University Park and Willamette County, Illinois, authorizing execution of a memorandum of understanding by and between Robinson Engineers LTD and the village of University Park for design and construction engineering services for the street resurfacing of Abbott Lane and Amherst Lane, and the acceptance of proposal for geotechnical engineering services from GeoGon, Chico, Chicon, I'm sorry, Professional Services LLC. Is there a motion?
So moved by trustee Wilson, second by trustee McMullin.
And this is, I'm very happy to see this, you will see, we did televise it, we, um, talked about it, the engineers went on the streets, because Amherst and Abbott has not, is just in a deplorable situation, and I'm happy that we were able to fix it for them. And the fact that we realized that it hadn't been touched since 83, and I'm just gonna say, we do have a five-year plan that we're putting in place right now, so things like this won't go that long to be repaired, and we need to have that, and it shouldn't have been lacked since 1983. But I'm glad that this board is taking action, and we're working towards getting these things rectified. Roll call, please.
Mayor, just a second, I have a couple of questions. I don't know if anybody's here can answer, I was just wondering what the distance was that's gonna be repaired, and why were the cores necessary? Are there some structural issues?
Oh, yes.
You know, related to the street?
Back, that we, you like to address that, please?
Okay, Mayor Covington and Board of Trustees, I did receive a few notes from the manager on this particular item. Robinson Engineering had identified Abbott and Amherst as two of the worst roadways in the village, and the manager informed me that engineering and core sampling of the roads were needed in order to determine what the exact cost of reconstruction is going to be. Uh, they stated that the, when those, when that information was found, that the bid would still go out through Robinson. Uh, the manager wanted me to report that currently there are no grants that we've found available for municipal street repair, and that the estimated revenues received through MFT on an annual basis would not be sufficient for the project, and that, uh, if grants were to become available, we would need to know what those exact costs were in order to know how much funding to ask for.
That's sufficient, please.
The second part of the question was, do you have any idea how much, we're talking about what kind of distance is it, is it block, or is it mile, or what?
Yeah, that, that part I'm not sure of.
Okay.
I think, talking to Robinson Engineers, uh, it's gonna be the entire blockage, the street, both streets, entire Abbott and Amherst. Okay, any others? Hearing none, roll call. Trustee Wilson?
Aye.
Trustee Brooks?
Both aye.
Trustee McMullin?
Both aye.
Trustee Payton?
Aye.
Trustee Oscar Brown?
Aye.
Mayor Covington?
Both aye.
Mayor, the resolution number is R2018-34. Thank you very much. D3, resolution of the village of University Park, Willamette County, authorizing execution of an agreement by and between PT Farrell Construction Company and the village of University Park for the construction of Industrial Drive and Joseph Court Railway improvements. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by trustee Wilson?
Second.
Second by trustee Brooks. I get, questions, concerns, comments? Hearing none, roll call. Trustee Wilson?
Aye.
Trustee Brooks?
Both aye.
Trustee McMullin?
Both aye.
Trustee Payton?
Aye.
Trustee Oscar Brown?
Aye.
Mayor Covington?
Both aye.
Madam Mayor, the resolution number is R2018-35. Thank you very much. Resolution, D4, resolution authorizing the execution of a property tax abatement agreement for the financing of road improvement with the village of University Park by and between the village of University Park, Will and Cook Counties, Illinois, and Altrio Steel Corporation, Buckwreck Truck Lines Incorporated, International Brothers of Electric Workers Union Nine, and LS Power LLC for industrial drive and Joseph Court improvements. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by trustee Brooks, second by trustee McMullin. Questions, concerns, comments?
Uh, question?
Yes?
Uh, yes, uh, the, uh, on the previous, I believe, ordinance, it was, uh, the cost was $295,000 or thereabout, but there is authorization for up to $4 million. Uh, why is that?
Authorization, where was that?
In the, uh, it's in the, uh, yeah, I guess if you look at the...
It's been a while, so...
At the preamble.
He's not available on that one, but you can talk to trustee, trustee, you can talk to...
Yeah, it says, uh, under the facade, it says, "Village is authorized for 400, uh, 4 million." But, uh, go a little bit further in, uh, yeah, it'll be, uh, financing sources and funds. It says it's $295,800. So why, why such a big disparity in the amount that we're authorizing compared to the actual cost of the roadway improvement?
Well, I know it's been a minute since you've been here, um, trustee, and to let you know, I don't know if you, well, I haven't talked to you, so this is something that they have agreed to work together and budget. These companies have gotten together, and they're going to finance this themselves.
Yeah, and you'll have to forgive my absence, Madam Mayor. I do have a valid reason, I may make a statement about that either today or at the next board meeting. However, uh, my absence does not explain, uh, why there's discrepancy of, uh, between $4,295,800. Now, that's the question, not whether or not I've been at four minutes or not.
Well, trustee Payton?
Yeah, trustee, I think, uh, what you're seeing with the $4 million is what the village can do.
Right.
So that's the theoretical limit that the law, or whatever the regulations are, will permit. However, for the work that's going to be done, that we're authorizing, and, um, that the companies are actually paying for through tax abatements, uh, is 295,000. So that's why there's a difference between the two, but then we're not talking apples and apples, you know?
Uh, attorney?
That would be the gap, just people living in two months, that actually be related to the project directly, it's not like there's any...
Trustee?
Madam Mayor, also, let me say, um, with this, we had an opportunity when they opened up this Local Nine, that the trust, it was trustee Williams, myself, you, the village manager, we were all back there, and we had an opportunity to speak with the gentleman who is indeed in, uh, in charge of Local Nine training, that, that grand opening. Uh, I did have the opportunity to speak with him, and the embarrassment part was that if Director Richardson can validate what, uh, the question, if need be, that we had to go back there ourselves, the rolls were so horrible for this grand opening. And the gentleman, I can't think of his name, Madam Mayor, unless you remember his name, who owns, uh, or who was in charge of it, but the, they did agree to put their funds together, because they understood our situation financially, uh, and they will be doing the road repair themselves. I did speak to him firsthand after the grand opening.
Yes, and they have had several meetings with us on that, and, and they were very gracious, and they said they understand our financial situations, and it will be a costly effect, and they were gracious enough to do that at the grand opening, and it was really great. I was happy that the ones that did appear, uh, came, came. Um, and they have great things for our village, great, uh, it's one of the largest, and that's why they're really adamant about fixing, repairing the streets, which I'm gonna have Director, um, speak on it as well, because they're one of the largest training centers. They're larger than the one that's at 127th Street in University Park. We're going to have another opening of it, we're going to talk to them. Uh, it was over 200 people there, uh, our Secretary of State was there, people flew in from Washington DC. It was a fabulous event, and he had told us things that he was going to do with our village. Uh, we had talked to South Florida Mayor Managers, the Black Managers Association will be doing a tour there as well. They did talk about, see, uh, trustee, um, Oscar Brown had brought something here about looking for careers. They're going to be a part of our seminar that we're going to have here next month about careers and hiring and their training. So we're blessed to have even a larger training facility in University Park there, and we're very, very happy about it, and I will let, uh, the village's director speak on it, Mr. Gary Richardson.
Um, thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to clarify something for trustee Brown. Trustee Brown, with the Illinois Department of Transportation bid process, they put a cap on what they deem as standard for a bid process to go out under the IDOT rules. So this cap for this project that IDOT put out was $4 million, but the bids came in at $2, and so, some change. Uh, thank you. Okay.
Thank you. Any others? Hearing none, roll call, please. Trustee Wilson?
Aye.
Trustee Brooks?
Both aye.
Trustee McMullin?
Both aye.
Trustee Payton?
Aye.
Trustee Oscar Brown?
Aye.
Mayor Covington?
Aye.
Motion passed. Madam Mayor, the resolution number is R2018-36. Thank you very much. At this time, we'll call for an adjournment from this special meeting. So moved by trustee Oscar Brown, second by trustee McMullin. Okay, to readjust, and we're gonna go straight, and since we have a large agenda, I don't want to take a break and have people dismayed and people hanging around too long, because we have a lot of business to handle tonight, it's a cow, so we're gonna go straight into our regular board meeting. So I need the vote for the adjournment, roll call, please. Vote for, I'm sorry, vote for adjournment. Madam Mayor, I believe, roll call, sorry, roll call, please, for the adjournment. Trustee Wilson?
Aye.
Trustee Brooks?
Both aye.
Trustee McMullin?
Both aye.
Trustee Payton?
Aye.
Trustee Oscar Brown?
Aye.
Mayor Covington?
Both aye. Thank you.
Now, committee of the whole meeting, Tuesday, September 11th. And I would call to order at this time. Roll call, please. Oh, I'm sorry. So we gotta be down, this is too much. Okay, Mayor, I'm ready. Yes, are you ready? Yes. Roll call, please. Trustee Wilson?
Here.
Trustee Brooks?
Present.
Trustee McMullin?
Present.
Trustee Payton?
Here.
Trustee Oscar Brown?
Here.
Mayor Covington?
Present.
For those that weren't here, we'll do the pledge of allegiance. We did do the pledge of allegiance earlier, our previous meeting. Okay, at this time, um, we don't have an officer here. Okay, this time we have general public. Let's get see Greer. Can see Greer?
Chrissy.
Chrissy, I'm sorry.
Oh.
Yes.
What?
Oh, did you want to speak?
Yeah, I do.
Please come up.
I've never been to anything like this.
Oh, no problem. Welcome.
Yeah, we know so.
Oh, it's always good. Yes, ma'am. Right here to the podium.
She put, somebody wrote my name in, it's Chrissy, it says Chrissy, but I have a hard name to pronounce anyway.
Thank you.
Bottom line, I moved out here in February of this year, and unfortunately, I'm over here in the handicapped senior building, one Thornwood Mall. And I noticed that, I already knew that the suburbs is different from the city far as transportation, but it's an obstacle, and it's a, um, I can't afford a fall. And at the Metro University, the, um, University Park Station, that is a danger soon as it starts to snow and get cold. And you see all the brown there, it is leaking all through there. That's ice. I can't afford a fall. I want to know who has the power and who's, who makes the decision? Why is it that paratransit cannot take me to the Richland Park Station, and Richland Park says they have their own, uh, service, but they can't come here and come get me? And I'm being told by different residents, oh, it's a fight with the mayor, and I'm like, what? What kind of stupid mess is that? So... They can hear me, I know they can, I'm hearing it clear, that can be heard across three football fields without a mic. I promise you, I don't be misunderstood or not heard. Okay, so whose job is it to do something about the metro station, and not just that? This bus, this 367 bus, in the middle of the day, it does stupid things like it don't make a stop at Thornwood, but yet it's a senior handicap building. Really? Who smart idea was that? Everybody sitting there looking, duh.
Okay, now I'm waiting for you to finish. Now I'm waiting for you to finish.
I'm looking for, I'm waiting on my answer to the question. I just put forth the question. I want to know whose dumb decision was that, that this bus makes these stops, but in the middle of the day, if you could, if you're coming back on that train, you gotta walk from wherever, and then in the morning, if you got an appointment or want to go somewhere before nine o'clock, you gotta come out and make a country mile walk from that building to the bus stop down here. How is that aiding, how is that aiding anybody that's handicapped or senior? That's ridiculous. Who comes up with this stupidity?
I'm glad that you're here tonight.
Really?
Yes, ma'am, because Pace is here.
Yeah, where are they?
And, and where's you? And we're gonna really explain a lot to you, but, you know, if a person stomps their toes in University Park, I'm to blame. So no matter what happens, I'm going to take the blame.
Okay, so whose job, you can do something about that metro, about all that leaking and ice and water?
I'm gonna have him to speak to it, and then I'll speak to it as well.
Okay, if you're speaking, that's not gonna fix it.
No, 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 ma'am. He's going to tell, he's going to tell you right now, well, we can do just a second.
First and foremost, I appreciate you coming up here. Welcome to the village, John.
Yeah.
My name is trustee...
Okay, yeah, they did a real big welcome with all of what I just told you.
All right, that's, that's a mouthful. I will address the first part of it, okay? In reference to Metro Station, we have a campaign going on in University Park that we are addressing some of the issues that Metro has, because we're on the end of the line, and it happens to be one of the stations that's really falling in terms of repair. And, uh, I catch the train every day. So I catch the train early in the morning, and I come home in the evening, it's the same thing. So we had a campaign back in, uh, April of this year, and we had, we invited the Metro executives out to University Park. It was put on camera, and also, we had several mayors from the surrounding suburbs address this particular issue, because the infrastructure at our metro station is basically falling apart. We addressed that, we addressed that with not only a news conference, but, uh, subsequent meetings with Metro. And I have a few colleagues out here that ride the train with me every morning, like Ms. Humes and so on and so forth. There are individuals that are concerned about the same thing that you're talking about, and I understand, uh, I, matter of fact, I take pictures all the time, and I send them to the mayor, and then we get them to Metro. So Metro told us that they were gonna promise us a, um, an upgrade starting in July. I haven't seen anything, and I write it every day. And July and August, they were gonna start the upgrade. It was cosmetic, it wasn't really infrastructure, it was cosmetic. They said they don't have the money. I said, well, there are a lot of stations between here and Milliam Station that had upgrades for the last two years, but we didn't get, we weren't excited for that. So if it wasn't for the residents here at University Park and some of the officials here, who are out on that cold, uh, April day, when it started raining on us, but, but the thing is, we tried to address it, and the only thing that they came up with that is not good enough for us. The only thing that they came up with is cosmetic, uh, changes. And right now, there hasn't been any cosmetic changes at all. And the pictures that I took last week are exactly from the ceiling, once you go down into the metro station, you see all that brown, all that rust in there.
No, it's right there at the end of the ramp. And mind you, I walked the ramp, because me and the stairs are not friends. So right there where the stairs end, or start, depending on if you're coming down or going up, the ramp is right there. And all of that is leaking from the ceiling. Then when you get to the second set of stairs, it's leaking there too. When you get to the court, uh, the machine, it's leaking there too.
We acknowledge that, and if you look at the plaque on the inside of the station, it says 1977, 1977. And this, this sort of thing was addressed fully at this. And I can see Gina Williams out here, she was at that meeting there, Ms. Humes was at that meeting, Ms. Taylor was at that meeting, and Madam Mayor was at that meeting, and, uh, and we had the few mayors of the other cities, but they have failed to address this properly. We've done all that we can do, but we're gonna stay on it, because they're not doing anything about that.
Okay, seeing as how they get, coming with a maybe and I am, and we gonna try, but hold on, wait, no, I need to know also, why is it that I cannot get a ride from paratransit?
Not a mayor, point of order.
Hold on.
What?
Can we enforce the, the board rules?
Yes.
And the time limit?
Oh, that, what that mean, shut up?
No, ma'am.
Oh, really?
No, ma'am.
Great to meet you too.
Ma'am, ma'am.
Yeah.
I did, we will, just for your compensation, I will talk to you on side with this, because I was at a meeting Tuesday, and I brought this up, that they hadn't updated what they were supposed to do, because I am on the transportation committee, and I told them that this, nothing has been done since we went out there. So they're on it right now, trying to get that done, but it's been going on since 1977, as he said, and Metro will be able to address you about the bus service, and we have some refreshing news that will remedy your problems, what we're talking about tonight. So hopefully, yes, as far as transportation, a bus is coming to get you. You'll see what's...
No, I want to be able to take paratransit to Richland Park.
Right, that's what I'm talking about, that's what I'm talking about.
And the only, the only thing that came out, the, the, the owner of the parking lot, he kept his word. He filled in the gaps that he needed to...
What owner of what parking lot? What are you talking about?
The metro station.
Oh, that's somebody else that owns this? That's not owned by Metro? Oh, that's somebody else that owns this, that's not owned by Metro?
No.
No, it's owned by a single individual. So he fixed, he fixed his, his aspect of the problem that we had. But the Metro itself has to, um, address our concerns.
Right, so if I fall, which I don't want to, who do I sue?
That will be him.
Yeah, they don't have a check big enough to satisfy me, but I'm just checking.
And I would like to check with people, so, um, Lisa, would you get her phone number for me, please? Because I'd like to speak to her. Thank you. Uh, Ms. Deborah Strauss. Thank you, Ms. Greer.
Good evening, Board and all present. How's everybody this evening?
Wonderful.
Great. Just, uh, want to say all the thank yous that I always do annually after Senior Fund Day. I'll start with thanking the Village Board first off, uh, for the assistance that they provide to our committee, uh, the Fire Department, DPW, Cable Studio, all of the under fifty-five people that attended that bought five dollars. Definitely appreciate that. And all of our donors, and I might add, uh, Keely assisted our committee considerably with a lot of the, um, paperwork and so forth. But I'd just like to give a shout out, if, if I, if I can, to the donors as far as the, um, they're, they've been consistent donors with us and we had a couple that started this year. So we look forward to you continuing next year. Um, uh, Retired Chief Mel Easley, Trustee Milton Payton, uh, Precinct Committee Woman Sonia Jenkins, Retired Chief Daryl Stroud, Trustee Theopulis Brooks, UP Coke Enforcement Secretary Gwen Van Arsdale, and Village Manager Payton. If I can approach the desk, ma'am, I'd like to give them our thank you from the committee. And those that didn't make it this year, as long as you don't make fifty-five by next year, please come. Please come. And at the meeting tomorrow, we will discuss, ma'am, on trying to do something evening time.
Thank you.
Okay, it didn't, trust me, I heard you. We just didn't have a meeting.
No worries.
But thank you for the moment that you did pop in.
All right.
Appreciate it.
No worries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Ms. Dar Lawson.
Good evening, Board.
Good evening.
Thank you for this opportunity to, uh, speak to you. I just have a few concerns, one being the IRH report. I would like to know if this report is available in digital format. I understand that it's five thousand pages and, um, I'm not really interested in reading five thousand pages, but if I'm going to get it, I would like to know if it's available in digital format being that we're in an age of technology.
Yes.
I don't see me paying, uh, ten cent a page for five thousand pages, so. Uh, my other concern is, um, the news that we're hiring new employees. Uh, I'd like to share with you that, and I don't know if the Board knows this or not, but the employee insurance is not being paid. So if the employee insurance is not being paid and this is money that is being taken out of the employee's paycheck, how then can, if we can't afford that, how can we afford to hire new employees? If we can't do and handle the immediate needs of our village, what would be the sense of hiring new employees? Because we wouldn't be able to provide them insurance either. So you need to know that on a consistent basis, monies are taken out of employees' checks and the bill is not paid. And so the employee's insurance is canceled. And someone needs to remedy this problem. Uh, I have since, uh, spoken with the Department of, the Illinois Department of Insurance. So I want to take this opportunity to make the Board aware of it before further action. Okay, and my other concern is, uh, there was a challenge to, uh, the residents, to find out how the numbers were created for our budget. Now every year, we understand that you're going to, uh, increase the taxes of the residents by the four point nine nine percent because, you know, uh, you can do that and, and there's nothing we can do about it. That's basically what I understood, uh, last, last year when I approached some of the trustees about this. So i- if you're gonna do that, I would encourage you to at least come up with a budget with real numbers. And I realize my time is up.
Thank you. Um, at this time, I would, uh, have Mr. Our Village Manager, I don't know if he gave you that information, shows that you could respond to that, her comment? Or any of her comments? The Village Manager has had, uh, he was out sick, he had surgery. So he's not available right now.
Yeah, at this time, I'm, uh, taking a lot of notes over here to relay the information back to the manager tomorrow morning or by this late, at the latest by this afternoon when I talk to him.
I don't know that statement to be true. Okay, you said, I'm sorry, what'd you say? I don't know that statement to be true. About the insurance? About the insurance. Okay, thank you. And, uh, as far as, um, let me create, um, oh, um, some of the people, then you're saying about the hiring, that's our Village Manager that has a budget to hire. So the people that are hired right now are contractual. They're not, um, paid employees of, with benefits. So that's contractual. And they will get back with you, um, Chief Payton will get, um, Officer Commander Payton will get back with you on that, okay? Ms. Gina Williams?
Good evening, Mayor, good evening, Board and everyone here.
Good evening, thank you.
Um, I just want to say to Ms. Greer, um, regarding the metro situation, I was there and the mayor made it very clear that being that we are the first and the last stop and that our riders pay more, we do expect more. She made it very clear to them that she wanted upgrades and she wanted infrastructure done. Now they said they had put in some kind of new pump or system that we weren't gonna have the water problem. So I haven't rode Metro in a while, so I don't know if that's true or not. But I know I have written them letters and I have called. I have been diligent in this cause for our village. I also want to say, there was a letter that someone was circulating at our school board meeting, which I found it to be quite terrible for some gutless, spineless, belly, jelly belly person to put out that our mayor should go. Our mayor works tirelessly for this community. You all don't know the half of how hard she worked. And for you to take away from a meeting from our kids and try to make this political and a different focus, it's something wrong with that person. Now we got an op ed in the White House, why don't you put your name to that paper, whoever feels this way? Because if you don't like what's going on in University Park, there's a whole lot of exits to leave here. But I know for a fact, she works hard and she's doing all she can. She can't help it that she had a board that didn't work with her for years. Now we finally seeing progress and somebody wants to put the smoke out. Well, the devil is still a damnable liar. I'm not gonna put up with that kind of dumb stuff. And it's good to see you, Oscar, because last time I saw you, oh heck, was a pup. But I see you're here now, so welcome back, Trustee Brown. But I am tired of Morgan standing out here in the middle of the street, passing out this literature. She has nothing to do with CSK closing. She has nothing to do with the taxes being raised. Raise your voice at the right people. Come to the school board meetings, talk to Sandra Heard, get the homework done. Because standing around passing out garbage, it belongs in a garbage can. And we do have enough of that, don't we, Gary? Don't we have enough of it? So I don't think your guys need anymore. And don't complain in all them signs out here, because signs don't vote, people do.
Yeah, Ms. uh, Ms. Williams, I'd like to offer my apologies to you personally for my absence at the board meetings. I may be releasing a statement in regards to my absence from board meetings at the next board meetings. But I do accept full accountability and responsibility for any action that may have caused me to miss these, uh, board meetings. And I apologize for any hurt you may feel due to my absence.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, and, um, that was all that signed in and I appreciate your comments. Whether they're, they're never bad or negative to me. But that's what we signed up for and we have to take that. And like, I want to let everyone know, according to that, no, a library board, which I sat on for ten years, functions totally different from this board. The school board functions totally different. Different laws, different policies, different rulings, different budgets. We all have separate wisdom. As far as the boards, what we do, the library doesn't do. What we do, the school board doesn't do. And not going, not going to say that I can run, I like that, I like the compliment, but I don't run any other boards but this one. So as far as the school getting closed, I have totally nothing to do with that. I do support the school board, have done that for over twenty years and will continue to support that. But we are having a meeting September nineteenth and I wish that everyone would come out and give their support and whatever they have to say, because this board will be addressing it. We're not happy, talking about closing a school in our district. So that's it and we're gonna do everything possible that we possibly can. We've been supportive, I've come out to the school board meetings for years. But we need some parents to come out. We need to see these parents or these children out there. We can just say so much, but they need to come out. And again, thank you for your comments, continue to bring them here. We need to hear them so we can rectify them, because we're not everywhere all the time. But we appreciate your comments. We do not take them negatively, we take them constructively. Thank you.
Uh, Madam Mayor, I would say that I'd be recognizing regards to the school board.
Thank you. Um, and we will, even saying your comments. Okay, um, first thing on agenda, business items is eight, five A one, Discussion Ordinance of the Village University Park, Lululeah County, Terminating the De- the Delegation of TIF Three, Taxing Increment, Increment, Finance District and Redevelopment, Project Area Dissolving, the Special Taxal Allocations Fund retained on there too. I think that's something missing, but is there a motion? I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I forgot, I'm sorry we didn't have one. This is just for discussion at this time, Board. Anyone have any discussion on this topic?
Yeah, Chief Chelios, uh, did the, did the manager send any information regarding? I, I know that the TIF has expired, basically, and we've met all our redevelopment obligations, but, uh, did he give us any numbers as to what that could mean to the village and the other taxing bodies?
Uh, no, I do not have that information. My discussion with the manager this afternoon was basically outlined just for the special meeting agenda. Anything on this committee's, uh, schedule tonight, I don't have any information from the Board, from the manager.
Okay, well, just for the general public, um, what has happened is, is, um, when we create a TIF, um, a certain amount of the taxes are rebated back to the companies for the development. And once they meet the development cost, they're no longer eligible to receive, uh, payments. And so what then happens is the TIF then gets terminated and then those funds that we were previously giving back to them, uh, now come to the village and the other taxing bodies. And any surplus funds that may be in the TIF get also divided among the taxing bodies. And so that's why we're doing this right now. And I, I, I just want, I didn't have a chance to, to research the numbers before I got here else I, I probably could have provided that.
Any other discussion on the Board? I'm happy about that. And when these TIFs are expired, that means more fundings and revenue for our villages, which is a great thing. Any others? Okay, well, I'd like a motion if this, I'm sorry, to be placed on the permanent, uh, agenda for a next meeting. Okay.
No objections.
No objections to this, okay? This will be one, um, clerk. This will be placed on the next agenda? Yes. Uh, five A two, discussion related to the draft of the TIF seven study. Discussion is open. Anyone?
Well, I, I can just make a couple of comments if you'd like, Mayor. Just again, for the general public, we have a developer, Mark Good, who wants to, um, develop a major project. He's the developer that did the Georgia Pacific, uh, project, the, the million square foot building, the new one. But that TIF is expiring and I think in four or five years, maybe six. And so he needs another TIF to make it, um, uh, viable, you know, for the project. And it would be even more attractive in terms of what the village would get, uh, at least the preliminary discussions are what the village would get than the previous TIFs. In order to qualify for a TIF, they had to do a study to, because you have to meet certain criteria in order to even establish a TIF. It's gotta be what they define as a blighted area, uh, or, uh, uh, you know, another area. Um, I forget the name of it offhand, but it's kind of, uh, in the environmental area. The developer graciously consented to pay for that study because it was like thirty thousand, thirty thousand dollars.
Seventy thousand.
Was it seventy?
Yes.
It turned out a lot more, yeah. Because originally, we were, he was looking at around thirty thousand, so it's part of the project. So he not only wants to build another building that's bigger than the Georgia Pacific one, but a couple of other buildings.
Which is one million square feet, right?
Right, well, yeah, the building that he wants to build is gonna be, uh, the big one is gonna be a million three. And then he wants to build a couple of others that are smaller, but in the five hundred to seven hundred fifty thousand dollar range. And I think the, uh, proposal from Venture One also for a hotel, uh, and a big box store, gas station, couple hotels, is also gonna be included in that TIF, I think. So, you know, that provides the economic incentives for developers to come in and help do some things. So that's basically what we're saying is, we're going to be doing is just approving the, the study that was done. It's pretty comprehensive, it's the first one that I've read and it was pretty detailed, pretty comprehensive, because it was forty some pages.
And I was going to wrap right on, when we had the meeting, they have come here and showed the demonstration here. They've showed, uh, they had a workshop with the Village Board and the residents as well. I'm real excited about it. He even asked our input, what type of things would we like to see? And that was, I told him I'd like to see more of, he said, the fast food chains. I would like to have hotels. They were talking about at least two hotels, looking at the university. We have parents that come from out of the country to stay with their student's family and I thought that would be great, they'll have somewhere to go rather than Madison. Also, he said that, I told him I would like a sit-down, family-style restaurant and they were looking at, they took all of our input to see what we'd like to do and what we'd like to have. And it was very exciting to him, because if you notice, every highway equates a hotel. So we're looking for a five-star, because there is also a gentleman that does entertainment at Governor State University and he's also looking to ask for a theater, unperforming theater near the same area. So the two of them are talking and we're real excited about this. This will bring not only revenue, it will bring attention and it will bring more fundings. We talked to Southburn Mayor Managers where it comes in the hoteling. They will give additional fundings to the village for that reason. They, once the hotel is here, you get, you get all type of grants and revenue. So we're real excited about that and they will be finishing up the study soon and see what the study results is and we will have a meeting with the whole, or a meeting here, a workshop with the residents to see if they would like what's coming there and what we have to offer. So that's what the TIF, uh, seven study is all about. I'm sorry, trustee?
Yeah, Mayor, just one more thing. We, we also met with, uh, the school district. Mark Good asked for an introduction since I was previously involved with the school district. And. I was previously involved with the school district, and explained to them what he was looking at doing, and what the, the terms were gonna look like, and it's, it'll literally mean, uh, a lot of money, in the millions of dollars over time, for the school district. So that'll help, help for some of the things in terms of the quality of education, staffing, and programming, and so forth, for the long term. So they were pretty, uh, interested and excited about that prospect also, because otherwise there, there are no other major developments on the horizon, uh, that will provide us, um, revenue. We can't cut our way to, um, solvency. So we need additional revenue, and so this is a, this is really a very po- positive development, in particularly since, uh, we've gone through such a rough time financially. It's great that someone like Mr. Good and his company, uh, are interested in doing things with University Park.
Uh, Mayor, yeah, Mayor, I just wanted to, for those to visualize, uh, I know you had spoken of the hotels and so forth, for those who are wondering where this area is at, as soon as you come off I-57 up on Central, it would be that north, northeast corner, uh, going back, uh, that would be the development area that, uh, the TIF era that, uh, the mayor and trustee Peyton is talking about.
Thank you. So it's, I had a meeting Saturday with our mirrors, uh, our Southsboro Regional Light Mirrors, and the thing that we're fighting right now, there's a big fight against anything east of I-57, no development happening. Uh, Mattson was supposed to get something, for one reason, it's not happening. There are other things, and it's just really sad, but we're blessed, and I'm happy that we're not landlocked, we're very land-generated and blessed to have it, so not to mention the taxes are different here. Um, thank God that right now, Will County is not a part of that Class Eight Act, which is vicious right now, hurting developers quite a bit in Cook County. So we have a lot to be thankful and blessed for. So with that, uh, any other comments on this topic? Is this okay?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. You noted as well. Next item, five A four, discussion resolving authorization of execution of an annual lake management contract by, I'm sorry, five, wait, I'm sorry, oh, I'm sorry, it's five A three. Discussion of the Village University Park, Willacook Counties, and approving the acquisition of an eleven-foot reversible snowplow from the Heike, Heidiken Manufacturing Corporation. Okay, I think we will need to talk to our director on that one. Director?
Gary.
Mr. Sam.
Yes, Mayor, this is to, last year, we purchased a new one for one of the new trucks, from an O-five truck. This one will also bring the O-five up to date, so we can now start getting into a rotation with the trucks and plows.
Will this be something we can lease? I mean, we can lease it?
No, we can't lease a plow.
Okay.
This is just a plow for one of the five-ton trucks. This is a big plow.
How many?
I'm sorry?
How many, you said how?
We have two five tons, right? Or?
We have three.
Three five tons?
Yes.
And how many, uh, the, the size, and if I'm not mistaken, probably all the other size are under, or would be too small for the?
Last year, we bought a eleven-foot, this year, we'll get an eleven-foot. We still have a five-ton that is an eight-foot.
Exactly, yeah, that's why I wanted to make a point for the, for the board to understand that one of the plows are too small, and for the, uh, uh, board, just given my input, um, that knowing that we, we have to keep, or that we now have I-57, which belongs to University Park, the responsibility of plowing, it would benefit, uh, just having another plow into the fleet, uh, to make sure that on those, because we don't know, especially with this weather, we don't know when we would get hammered, and an eight-foot plow can tear on that five-ton truck, so that eleven-foot would be beneficial, uh, for the board. And actually, it would throw it better, um, am I mistaken, Director? It would, it would throw the snow better, so you wouldn't have to do multiple passes on, uh, the I-57 coming back into University Park.
That's correct.
Okay. Um, trustee Wilson?
No. So can you just explain for the residents, a couple of years ago, we bought two snowplows that were supposed to be able to go down the street, one pass. What's the benefit of having this eleven-foot reversible plow?
We bought the trucks, ma'am.
We bought?
We bought the two, two five-ton trucks that had old plows on them.
Oh, they came with old plows?
Yes, yes, they came with old plows. So last year, you replaced one old plow that was on the five-ton truck.
How wide is that?
Eleven foot.
Okay.
Eleven foot.
So explain the benefit, because I don't know about plows and trucks. Explain the benefit of having a reversible snowplow, if it already has a eleven-foot plow on there.
No, we have nine, we have nine-foot and eight-foot plows on a five-ton truck, which we have twenty, twenty-foot roads.
Is, is it, it just came with that? We couldn't have?
That's what it came with, yes, it came with that. So we're, we're taking those old two thousand and five plows off that are broken and falling apart, and we're replacing them with the new plow. Instead of replacing two last year, it was my suggestion to place one per year, so in four years down the road, we won't replace all three, we'll only have to replace one. So now we have a twenty-foot in exchange here, that's two passes down that road, versus now with the six-foot and the eight-foot, we're going up and down that road.
Or the other eleven-foot?
I'm sorry?
We have an eleven?
Well, the eleven-foot is the only thing that is managed in I-57 right now, which we can't keep up.
And, and what's the benefit of a reversible snowplow?
The only difference with reversible snowplow, I can come down the street and turn it left or turn it right. What we have now are called straight plows. So for me to come down the street, I only can come down one way. The reversible plow is just hydraulic, I can go left, I can go right. Yes.
Okay, and with this said, cost, who are we talking about as far as cost? Do we have any type of offsetting cost? Anything that could assist us with this?
Uh, no, ma'am, right now, no.
The cost?
I'm trying to pull up my sheet, uh...
Eighty-four ninety.
Eighty, okay.
That's the, that's, that's the best deal.
That is the lowest one, yes.
I thought that was something, maybe you had something different than what we had.
Madam Mayor, I would like to recognize. In regards to the, uh, three quotes that you have, is there, uh, uh, in ga- in regards to the three quotes that you have, do, uh, any one of the snowplows perform better than any other one, or is a reversible snowplow reversible snowplow?
They are reversible snowplow, it just depends on what manufacturer we're going to. Uh, Hinky is ten to twelve weeks out, some of the other ones are a lot longer. Um, Hinky keeps the stuff in stock, they're in Illinois, so we get it a little bit faster, freight's a little bit cheaper, because it has to be trucked, because it's a twenty-five-hundred pound snowplow.
Okay. Yes, sir, trustee?
Yeah, Mayor, I just wanna, uh, once again, I wanna make a comment about our public works. Uh, right now, usually, it's the director and then like eight guys, but they are down. Uh, this winter is coming fast. I want the residents and the trustees who, uh, are not familiar with it to understand that, uh, we now have the three thirty-seven exit, I-57, that belongs to University Park. Your tax dollars are paying for that. Last year, no one, no one competed with our eight trucks, and I think it's great that we have three five-ton trucks, and we have plows that are big enough to sit on those trucks, because I'm gonna tell you, the only thing I can e- e- express of how, um, to compare when you have a smaller plow, the reason why he says break is because prior to, uh, I wanna say trustee Wilson coming aboard, uh, somewhere along the line, some plows were purchased, and they were, did nothing but tear them up. So Gary has been doing anything, but everything but trying to put the proper equipment, uh, the plow, the plows that they purchased would be more for a pickup truck. The plows, taking something that's small and putting it on a five-ton truck, that's why he mentioned the passes have to be two, three times, uh, coming through the village. So understand that we have from Western all the way to I-57, he's depending on one five-ton truck and an eight-foot plow to try to clear a path, because, believe it or not, the state is not coming through, nor the county. So it's a situation where, uh, he has to have the plow that is suitable for those trucks, and actually for the snowfall that we, we may have to the large number. University Park is bigger than what most people realize, and the mayor even made it clear when we were out at the, oh, grand opening. It is just huge. So he does have to indeed go back and handle Industrial Park as well with the five-ton truck.
Okay. All right, thank you very much. Just lead another hole.
Does it walk the whole way?
I'm sorry, you have a question?
I just told them, oh, Gary, the plows, if you say eleven-foot, do that do the whole road? How big is that?
University Parkway is twenty-foot across.
So it's only half?
So eleven-foot, I'm coming down one side one time.
Oh, yeah, I was hoping, I was wondering what you, what you were.
We do two and three passes.
And so what's wrong with the eight-foot then?
Well?
What's wrong with that one?
We'll be coming down the road quite a few times, versus making one pass.
But you still have to go on the other side with the eleven-foot, right?
I'm sorry?
You're still doing both sides.
We are, but one truck can handle this road right here by itself. We have six routes, we have six routes in University Park, we have eight trucks. The industrial area is bigger than the residential area, we go as far as Moni. On I-57, our pickup trucks, no way can handle that. We have a requirement to keep our major roads, our emergency routes, open first for police and fire. That's where I concentrate our five-ton trucks. But having a five-ton truck with an eight-foot plow, the truck is heavier than the plow.
Okay, thank you. Okay, that's a go. All right, five A four, discussion resolution authorizing the execution of an annual lake management contract by, then between the Village of University Park, Willacook Counties, Illinois, and Sullivan Lake Management for the maintenance of the Western Avenue Road Pond. Is there a discussion?
I do have something. I noticed this is basically for the, the pond over on Western Avenue, but, uh, I tried to take my grandkids fishing over at Pine Lake this summer, and it was, I caught nothing but weeds, because I, so it was a real problem, so I, I was thinking that we need to maybe add the, add Pine Lake to the maintenance, uh, part here, because it's also a danger, you know, because, uh, kids could get trapped, you know, and tangled up in all those weeds around the edges. So, uh, I, I would like to see us, uh, maybe expand this to include, uh, Pine Lake as well, and it'd make the fishing a little bit easier also. I wouldn't have to use as many weedless hooks.
Any others? And that, and that's really an issue, because that lake on Western is disgusting looking, and I'm happy to see that we're gonna get on that, we've had a lot of complaints about it. Uh, trustee Wilson?
Uh, yeah, yeah, I, I, just two more things. In, in the proposal, there were also two, uh, additional recommendations. One was the lake dye for six hundred and twelve dollars, and the lake biological augmentation for nine hundred and eighty-four dollars, and I'm thinking we should probably do that. The lake dye is to prevent sun, uh, from penetrating the lake so much and creating more growth, and the, uh, the, uh, lake, uh, biological augmentation is a herbicide that they put in there to help control that as well. So my recommendation, uh, would be also for both places to include, include that as well, because it'll probably be, uh, a little easier in the long term.
Trustee Wilson?
So I just, I have a couple of questions. Do you have a total on what this annual cost is? Everything is broken down, I know I probably could have added it myself, but do you have a total for the contract?
Uh, I, if I'm correct, I think it was like fifty-one hundred for the year.
Fifty-one?
Fifty-one sixty.
Fifty-one sixty for the year, and not including the two portions he just mentioned.
Okay, okay. And my next question, did we look, did you look at another, any other companies, or did you just look at this one company? And the reason I ask is because we have a company that manages our ponds in you, in Fairway Club Estates, and, uh, I, I, I can't be quoted, but I don't recall us adding the dyes and things, and our, our ponds are beautiful, to me, and they don't have fountains. So did you look at any other companies?
I, I did call your company, because they've been helping me through the golf course.
It's not, it's not Paul Wilson's company.
I mean, not your company, I'm sorry.
My God, that'll be in the next, oh, that'll be on Next Door tonight.
I am.
That'll be on Next Door tonight. She got a phone.
Excuse me, trustee Wilson, correction. Um, the golf club has been helping us.
Have not flyers on there.
A hundred percent. They have been there with me doing the best they can. Uh, they have made many recommendations to me, and honestly, they recommended this company due to the fact they do electrical and everything else. Um, if you go by the lake now, we had our first installment of a treatment, um, the pump has not went off in a week. Uh, it's clearing up, it's a lot better. They come out with the boat, they do all of those things. So it takes a lot of work from us. Um, before, the Parks Department used to just handle the lake, and now, so we have all of that on, on top. But I had about maybe four or five companies come out to look at Pine Lake and Western, and they came back with the best maintenance program for the year. Yes.
That's great. I, I did notice that the algae or whatever that is on top is decreasing. But I just wanna stay consistent, right? Every time we purchase something, I, well, no matter what it is, I ask for three quotes.
That's right. Well, that's the standard.
And, and I, I just have to be fair and consistent, and ask for, can you maybe get three quotes to include that lake or pond and Pine Lake from them, and maybe two other companies?
Sure.
All right, thanks.
We have Pine Lake, by the way.
Uh-uh, if you could just get a quote.
I will, I will call back. A lot of them didn't wanna do the yearly maintenance, so that was part of it also.
Because it's, it is a beautiful lake, but like, like Milton, uh, trustee Peyton mentioned, you can't go fishing, you can't go boating because of the weeds and entanglement issues. So if you could get a couple quotes, I appreciate it, thanks.
Yeah, and it does look good, for the record, that we are doing consistency according to our policies, that we get three quotes and have it presented at all times, just for every, just for the future, okay? We all know that. Okay? So is that okay?
Uh, yeah, Madam Mayor, I would like to recognize.
Yes, sir.
My question was in regards to the, uh, lake dye and the, uh, bi- biological augmentation. Could you get away with one without the other, and in regards to, uh, services?
As long as I know, I don't think we ever dyed that pond, so I, I really don't know. Is it a benefit? It is, if you do it on a consistent basis.
What's the benefit?
Yeah, it helps with mosquitoes, it, it, the dye, it helps with the smell, um, it also helps with the clarity. Um, we do a blue dye in-house, so I don't know what type of dye they would use, but it helps with smell and things of that nature.
So can you find out what kinda dye? Because some of, I know a couple of our ponds have fish in them, and when you put certain algae eaters in a, in a pond or a lake, you don't have to do all these, um, non-eco-friendly, um, things, and, and a dye in a pond or a lake, where we could be having fish and natural animals. Okay, thank you.
Uh, trustee Wilson, I'm just wondering if, uh, maybe we can include the ponds over in your subdivision and get a better deal for them, and then backbill them for it, you know, the subdivisions, this is their responsibility. this is their responsibility. Could we get something, maybe, you know?
So the.
To get a better rate for your subdivision, right?
Deer Creek manages our ponds. They take care of them. Deer Creek Golf Course.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. Not Paul Wilson. No, that's Deer Creek Golf Course. If they didn't, Trustee Peyton, that would be a great idea, but Deer Creek manages those.
Okay, thank you. That's all. It's open form, yes ma'am.
Okay, just for clarity, Mr. Richardson, this fifty-one sixty is the maintenance program for the year?
For twelve months. It's, I don't have it in front of me, I'm sorry, but by my knowledge, I think it's like four hundred and something dollars a month between the time of, is it March through October, they come out twice a month, maintain it, keep it clean, make sure the air raid is going. And then in the winter months, they come once a month to, so it's a twelve month program for the fifty-one hundred dollars.
It's four thirty.
You're going to come back with additional.
Quotes.
Some other companies, yes.
Okay.
And this fifty-one sixty does not include the dye and augmentation over there?
So give us a total, total of everything conclusively, okay?
So just to summarize, because there was a lot.
Right.
We're going to get two more quotes to include the pond on Western and Pine Lake. We're going to find out what kind of dye that is.
If needed.
And if you can do the augmentation or the dye, can you do them independently? And if there's a more eco-friendly way that we can take care of the ponds and lake as opposed to using a dye. Okay, good.
Reach out to your, when you go into meetings, reach out to EPA.
They recommended this company.
Okay, just making sure we're doing, accessing all our resources, okay? Sure.
Will, will these questions be answered before it goes on the agenda? Or you just place this on the agenda without the audience really knowing?
We'll bring it, that's why this is the meeting of the whole and they want to discuss it, so they, he will come back with his recommendations, what he's, what we asked him to go and do. He'll bring them back to us and we will put that on the agenda as a first reading or a second, third reading, okay? Yes, ma'am.
Do we have a limit or a goal of what we want to spend, whether it's a new type of adding Pine Lake? Do we have any kind of goal or limit what we want to spend?
Um, I can just give you a quick idea of what we spend. We spend roughly close to four, five hundred dollars a month in chemicals and transportation because to go out in the water, we have to get the boat that the fire department loaned us. But unfortunately, we don't have a trailer. So when we have to go out in the water to spread chemicals, we go to A rental and rent the boat for the, the trailer for the day to go back and forth. The chemicals are very expensive, but not just the chemicals. When we go out there, by safety laws, I need to put two people out there, somebody onshore and somebody in the water. We only got eight. So that also takes a lot away from everything else. So having a company just maintain it for the twelve months, it takes a lot off of us because we still have to cut it. We still have to do all of the things to treat the water. We have to test the water twice a week. In the wintertime, we have to core the water once a week for EPA standards. So it's a lot of work that we put into it. Just last month, we spent four hundred and eighty-nine dollars from area salt just on chemicals for Western.
Okay, so do you have the expense for going to Pine Lake or are you doing anything on this?
We, it's roughly a little bit more for Pine Lake because the acres are a little bit bigger, but for some reason, we don't have a lot of the same algae problem in Pine Lake as we do on Western because of all of the trash.
The fish maybe.
Because of the trash.
Right.
We get a lot of trash into that lake at, on Western, I'm sorry.
On Western. It's our sewer.
The sewer, thank you. The sewer system over there, if you notice a week or two ago, Western Avenue Pond was flooding because there was so much water passing through in the rain. But since that pond sits so low off of Western Avenue, where does it go to? It goes straight to the pond. So we spend a great deal of time over there, plus also we have the air raid over there. So it's electricity we have to deal with. It's a different factor than Pine Lake.
Would you just say on an estimate basis, would it be dealt with that, what you already stayed possibly?
Uh, no, Pine Lake maybe, maybe a hundred, hundred and fifty dollars more in chemicals.
And that's an issue because I saw Public Works last week going around and we put signs up specifically asking people to stop trashing your village, stop throwing paper in your village, love where you live. And they have to spend time on type of everything else that they do. They have to remove the sewer tops. They were doing this Friday when we were out. And just pulling the trash up is amazing. What people are throwing on the grounds and it's all going back to the sewer, potato chip bags, all kind of paper, and they pull this out. When they don't, when you throw the paper there, it stops it up and it backs up to our streets. And people are talking about flooding and that. If we would just think about it, if you get your paper back, put it in your pocket or put it in your purse or put it in your car or something until you get where you can dispose of it. Don't throw it on the streets because it eventually hurts us and we're paying people to clean these sewers out on a regular basis. If not, it backs up and causes us even more problems. Okay, everyone? We have done that. We have the signs up to be fined if they found litter. Litter, I don't know if the fines are, what are the fines?
Five hundred dollars.
Five hundred dollars. Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
You said it was five hundred dollars a month to maintain from your end?
And chemical wise, yes.
So would it be cheaper to go through the maintenance if you were getting?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
Six thousand dollars you are maintaining?
If we maintain it or the company maintain?
If you maintain it, it's six thousand dollars if you were getting twelve months.
It's cheaper to go through the management company. Yes, it is. Yes, it is. Yes, it is.
Thank you.
Right, because you also have to factor in the labor costs and the benefits.
That's just six thousand dollars, just the chemicals.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
I just want to ask a question. Who makes the decision on what it is that you all place far as fine? Because, excuse me for my ignorance.
No, ma'am.
The city board, city.
No, ma'am.
I don't know nothing about.
That's okay.
It's totally like a circus to me.
That's okay.
Okay? And in the city of Chicago, you can get hit with a fine as high as three thousand dollars for this. Whatever they want to write it for, up to three thousand dollars. Get car plugged a cigarette out your car.
Right.
And it's rolling on the city street.
Right.
They snatch your car for thirty days. You gotta pay that.
Wow, they would kill us on that.
And you gotta pay a fine of two thousand five hundred dollars before you even can get your car back.
We're going to get you on a committee.
So they don't have to plug the cigarette out.
Thank you.
Of your car. You got to pay that.
Thank you.
And they snatch your car too, so I'm just trying to be.
No, no, that's great. I thank you. We got to get you on a committee. That is something, that's some good information. That's some good information. Thank you, that's good revenue. Thank you for that comment. We can use that. Thank you, Ms. Greer. Okay, is that okay, guys, to go? All right, thank you. We need to up our fines and they yell about it anyway. Okay, Trustee Wilson?
Um, so back to Ms. Lawson's question. So Gary, will you be, I'm sorry, Director Richardson, will you be able to have this information to us by the next board meeting so it can be put on the agenda? Or will it take a little longer and it needs to wait till the next committee and the whole?
I will start contacting tomorrow.
Okay.
And I will be updated by next week.
Okay, all right, so we look forward to that update. Okay, five A five, that's a go, guys. Let's go on to discussion. Discussion of ordinance authorizing execution of a cable trans television franchise agreement by and between the villages of University Park, Willoughby Counties, Illinois, Comcast of Illinois, West Virginia LLC. I'm happy to see this back on the agenda. We used, I'm glad our cable station is no longer shut down. Amen. People can see what's going on again. And they were, we were getting, because we lost revenue from that. We used to get a franchise of fundings from Comcast when we had our station open and it helped us tremendously. So we are trying to get that and I will open for discussions. Would you like to speak to that, Ms. Jenkins?
Good evening, Mayor and the Board of Trustees.
Good evening and thank you for that.
Um, the cable station has been reopened. I went into the position in December and ended up speaking with Johan Fernando. He's our governmental representative to get the, looking to the PEG funds as well as renew the franchise agreement. So the attorney has reviewed the franchise agreement and it is ready to make a decision as to whether or not it'll be renewed until two thousand twenty-three.
Okay, so any questions from the board?
No, just one comment that we are, we are eligible, we're eligible now as a matter of fact, to get the five percent of the gross revenues for our cable activity, or, you know, it used to go in the general fund, but six and one half dozen on the other because we pay, we pay the bills for the cable station out of the general fund. So that's extra revenue if we haven't, if that hasn't started already.
No, it hasn't started already because the renewal of franchise agreement and that goes hand in hand together, it's approximately thirty-five cents per subscriber per month. And then those, that money then turns, turns into the PEG funds, which is public education and governmental funds, which would then spend the money back into the cable station in order to try to replenish the missing equipment, to establish some, some policies, to get more people involved, to get more people to take the board meeting, to get young broadcasters back in, things on that level. So that's the hopes with that, with the subscriber fee, which is about four dollars and thirty cents per year.
Trustee McMullin?
Director Jenkins, you're doing an excellent job. I appreciate you on the board. And with the new agreement, would that include different municipalities subscribing to our, to our viewing or?
No, sir. No, our viewing is only the Village of University Park, so the thirty-five cents per subscriber would only be passed on to the subscribers to, who have Comcast only dish and all these other things, obviously that does not go into the funds for that. So it's almost like a tax, for instance, that would then come back to replenish the station for the residents to continue the educational, cultural, governmental meeting, viewing and such.
Thank you. That's something that I'm really happy for our kids, our young people, because now we're in the world of STEM, which is science, technology, education and math, engineering and math, and now they put an A on it for arts. So that increases opportunity for us to get grants as well as contributions from others. I'm working, because I'm working with a person right now with robotics and he's going to do a presentation to our village for our children and with the organization I was associated with, African American, we, I told them about this and what he was doing and they donated, someone from that organization gave him a check right away. So with these things open to our children, it's so, like you said, we're in a high tech world and I've been in forty years now, so it is much, much needed for our kids to get this back and the residents to know what's going on. Those that are unable to visit or come out to the board meetings, now they can see it once again. And again, I thank you for an outstanding job you've done with the various villages and working around, going and getting the knowledge and having your background in it and your degrees in it. It's been very, very helpful to us and I thank you for that.
Thank you. The hopes of the PEG funds also would be to resurrect the station aesthetically as well as electronically. And then long-term, we hope to try to make some type of collaborative efforts with Cremoni School District to try to do some labs and things of that nature to use it as a teaching center as well.
Also, I've talked to Governor State, you know, you've talked to her.
Yes.
And they're very interested in collaborating with us as well and funding and doing things with us. We've had meetings with them and I'm very, very happy about that collaboration. And then the ones we have with the various villages that you've talked to and they're funding, the funding that they're getting, so this is a great opportunity for University Park once again to start getting, receiving revenues and to educate our children into the world of technology again.
Yes.
Trustee Wilson?
Do you know approximately how many Comcast subscribers?
Um, off, off the cuff, I've pretty much tried, they don't, they won't give me that number, but I've kind of did the math and it's approximately about sixteen hundred, I'm guessing with the amount of dollars that equates to that. Yes, sir. Uh, thank you for your thirty-five cents. I appreciate you so much.
Right, oh, don't say that. Okay, yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Do you have a set schedule in the board meeting as per on the cable station, if you have access to it?
Yes, ma'am. Well, I am really trying to do that. I had a lot of technical issues down there. There is a way in, within the system that I am able to set a schedule. There have been, Trustee McMullin has pointed out, there's been a lot of different glitches that's happening. So what I would like to do is to try to get more consistent programming, to give you a solid block of programming before I say, hey, this board meeting is going to be on at that time. Because honestly, the equipment is there, since the station was closed two and a half years ago, it's the exact same equipment. And yesterday I went in there and all of it was down and because it was a power surge. So if I put a schedule up there with times, I'm actually, you know, you might be disappointed that you turn it on and it's not there. So basically what you're seeing is things that I have recorded and edited together and usually the previous two weeks' board meeting or things that are relevant, like Chamber fifty-seven. We just became, we're the partners of the year with Chamber fifty-seven right now. We're giving acknowledgement for that. And so therefore that's on for Chamber fifty-seven. School board meetings, things that are relevant to what's going on in the community.
And to let you know too, thank you, Chair McMullin, we have our community, our committee back together, our cable slash IT commission, a committee rather, back together. We have quite a few members. People were very, very happy to start back working on committees in their village. They were taken, stripped before, but no longer. This board has brought all those back so people can participate in their village and know what's going on in their village by participating on committees and commissions. And I'm very happy that we restored that with this board. And thank you so much for the work we've had. We've scheduled for another meeting next week.
Yes.
So I'm looking forward to that.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, board, any other discussions on that? I'm sorry. Yes? I'm sorry, Ms. Strauss first, she had her hand up for a while. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you, Trustee Wilson, because I had already written my own question about how many residents. Okay, as far as Comcast. And I don't remember, Mayor, if it was somewhere around March or April when I was asking, at what point in time when the contract ended with Comcast, the agreement, had there been any opportunity of researching any others? Just like Trustee Wilson keeps saying, getting two or three bids, two or three quotes. I remember asking and I apologize, I can't detail exactly what my question was. But I do recall getting an answer that someone other than Comcast would be checked with if we can get the same perks as you've mentioned with the residuals and so forth, because not everybody in this community has Comcast.
Yes, ma'am. So with cable, if you just go back in history and you just look back with Centel, Jones Center Cable, AT&amp;T, TCI, and you run through all of those companies, all those which I worked for at one point, that local program, the local television station is, that's what the franchise agreement is about. So in order for us to go into a different agreement with a different cable station or different AT&amp;T, for instance, HughesNet, things on that level, you would have to go into another agreement with that. Centel, if you look in the station, in different equipment that's there, Centel is stamped on the equipment, the outdated equipment. So they have already committed the equipment, the things of that, the structure of the, of the station is through Comcast, which is now Comcast because it started as Centel. as Centel.
So, you're saying, from my understanding, and I apologize, all right, so you're saying no one else will be committing to that or has that checked or?
Well, I mean, I can look into it a little further, but Comcast is the Illinois provider of cable.
Yes.
Um, there's not another, um, you know, it used to be, when you, if you lived in Naperville, you could get WOW Cable and then someone else could get Comcast. But, you know, in the age of satellite and YouTube and FireSticks and things like that, I mean, cable is kind of like a dinosaur in a sense at this point, because everything is kind of going digital. I don't know if I answered that, but I'm happy to look into it further and ask the, um, questions that you need in order to get the answers that you want as well.
But speaking of AT&amp;T and other cables, they are, historically Comcast was the one that started. I remember when they were Jones, I was with them when they were Cox.
Cox.
And they were the ones that, if you notice, most, majority of South Suburban area and some other areas, Comcast rules, basically. They have it and they offer a lot more than the other ones does. But it's not any harm in looking into other ones. But I don't know if they would offer such a package that they do. And unfortunately, when we did reopen the cable station, a lot of our equipment was mysteriously missing. Uh, it was sabotaged, basically, down there. We lost a lot and she did an inventory and working with what she's working with has been fantastic. And some of the things, some of our volunteers have even taken out of their pocket to purchase, to help her put this cable station back together.
Yes.
So, it's been a real effort. I don't know why they did, why they did what they did, but they did. But we're happy that it's back up and we're going to move forward. We're not going to, we're going to make lemonade out of lemons, okay? And that's why we're moving forward.
Um, just for the general public's knowledge, um, the stable, the cable station's been closed for two and a half years. And once we decided to reopen it and to put us on the map again as a, as a cable viewing audience, we noticed there's so many things that were missing out of that, out of that, um, collective. Because I was a part of the cable station years ago, because I used to rent material. I used to rent, uh, cameras and stuff from the radio, uh, from the cable station. And all of my children went through the cable station as young broadcasters, all of them. And we had a very, very high stock of cameras and tripods and things of that nature. So, when it was closed down, somehow everything is missing, is gone. So, we are starting from ground zero. That one camera is the only camera we had. And when we had our meeting last week, we just started, we, we starting that infancy, if you will. So, our cameras and equipment was pillaged, period. Where they went? I don't know. I don't know. But that's all we have to work with. And right now, Kate, uh, Mrs. Jenkins, Director Jenkins, is working with the bare minimum. All we trying to do is put out a quality product so we can look, so we can look at it and say, "This is the 21st century." Because we need a lot of help at the cable station. And we have the volunteers that just joined the cable station, like Ms. Taylor and, um, Ms. Humes.
Mr. Green.
She joined, she joined it.
And, and Green?
Oh, yeah, absolutely. So, just to let you know, historically, we had everything, but now we have nothing. But we're going to make it work. We're going to have our, our cable meeting, uh, next Monday. And we're going to, um, address a lot of these issues. But we should come into the 21st century. Right now, we're just working with the basics, okay?
Thank you. All right. Because she's waiting to go. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
I thought it was.
One more.
Will the cable station be used for political advertising? And here's what I saw, uh, when I was just watching it sometime last week. I did see where people were coming forth and saying what office they were running for. Uh, on the ca, I was, I was appalled that it was on there, but it was on there.
Well, um, we're WUPCTV Channel 4 in University Park. I know that there are a lot of public access channels that are out there, WYCC. Uh, but if you tune into Channel 4 on Comcast, the only thing that has been running, the only thing that I've been taping are, uh, our school board events, board meetings. Um, recently, I just put together the Community Resource Fair and the Senior Day, that's airing now. Um, but there, the, in the franchise agreement, in your packet, it gives you the guidelines in the franchise agreement. And it's for non-commercial use. Um, the guidelines will be strictly followed with Trustee, uh, McMullin and the, uh, committee. That's one of the things on the agenda and what's, what'll be done as far as, I know we're coming into election season, things of that nature, but the guidelines are in the franchise agreement and they will be enforced by the franchise agreement.
So, who would be posting that?
I don't know, ma'am. Um, I only handle the Facebook page, I only handle Channel 4.
For our village, right?
Only for our village.
Yes. Well, here's my question.
Yes, ma'am.
Does anyone else have the authority to post something other than yourself for our village?
No, ma'am, I'm the administrator for that. Yes.
Right, no more. And that's something that I'm happy that she learned from Palo's Hales.
Yes.
Um, it has to be strictly University Park and I don't know what you're referring to, um...
It was, um, I can tell you exactly what it was, because it was, um, Debbie Myers Martin was on there.
Oh.
And a young man came forward to say what he was running for.
Oh, right, okay.
Yeah, that was an era, right.
That was the Chamber 57.
Okay. So, that was the Chamber 57 event and there were some people there for that.
Holding themselves in a political way.
Right. So, here in a board meeting, as Trustee McMullin just pointed out in the last board meeting, I, whatever I record, I have to air in the entirety. So, they were here, there was a gentleman that was there for that. You are correct about that.
That was.
But it wasn't like, um, it, he did, he came up and said some things like that, but if I record it, I can't edit it out.
Right.
Can't do that. So, um, it, I could have just, I guess, not aired the Chamber 57 event, but then that would have lost the quali, the, the information that we need to be involved with Chamber 57. But you are correct about that and my apologies. Yes.
But, but in the future, that's why we're going to make policies to tell the people at the front door, "This will be aired, it cannot be any political advertisement or promotion."
Yes.
So, thank you for that.
That's, that is true. Thank you.
Okay?
Okay.
All right. Is that okay now? Are we on, moving on with that? Okay. Right now, I'm very, very happy, um, to finally bring this back once again, my friend. I've worked with her every Tuesday, first month, first Tuesday every month. Uh, this is the presentation and discussion related to the Village of University Park Vehicles for Pace and Suburban Bus Division for RTA. Jessica, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, thank you, Mayor, thank you, trustees. I tend to talk very loud, so I'm going to try not to scream in the microphone.
That's okay.
Um, thank you, Madam Clerk and the rest of the village administration and the public. I know it's a late meeting, so I appreciate you being here. Uh, my name is Jessica Robarchak. I was going to pay you if you could say that.
I know.
Um, I am the Pace Community Relations Representative for all of South and Southwest Cook County region and I have been for eight years. So, I've been representing Pace, uh, for the Village of University Park for eight years and been at Pace for 10 years. Um, I am here to discuss the community vehicle program, but if I might, because I know individuals might want to scoot out, um, the reason we're discussing the community vehicle program is actually why we're here because of the comments you made, that it's not a new comment that we're hearing about lack of service, um, and frequent service. So, if I might respond back to that very quickly, because I think that'll segue right into why we're talking about the community vehicle program.
Yes.
Um, so, uh, I can't speak for Metra, I'm very sorry. I don't work for Metra. I can tell you though, that at almost every transportation committee I've been to, it's South Suburban Mayors and Managers, um, oh, I am a little quiet.
Yeah, yeah.
Sorry, ma'am, thank you. Um, Mayor Covington has put Metra to task at almost every meeting I've been to about the condition of the Metra station. So, although I can't really speak for Metra, I know she has been there and advocated for the village on the repairs that are needed. Um, when it does come to, something that the village probably can't answer for you, um, when it comes to why, uh, paratransit service, and if anyone doesn't know what paratransit, it is, it is a curb-to-curb service for individuals who are unable to take regular, uh, traditional fixed route. Um, the reason why paratransit service will not service the Richton Park, uh, Metra station is because paratransit only operates where there is regular bus service operating. Um, the only bus operating to the Richton Park Metra only operates for less than two hours in the morning and then less for, less than two hours in the afternoon. It's a feeder that runs through Park Forest. So, because there's no traditional service there, that's why paratransit will not service the Richton Park Metra. Um, I know you referred to a, uh, Rich Township service, that would be the Rich Township Dial-A-Ride service.
No, they can't come to University Park, not really.
Correct. That is correct. Uh, University Park is a little unique, you fall into two counties and two townships. So, depending on where you live in University Park, you might be Cook County, you might be Will County, you might be Crete Township, and I believe it's Rich Township and Moni Township. So, you, you have multiple townships, counties that you're in, which although it, it makes the services available more, it's learning how to coordinate those services together to get where you need to go. So...
And they both offered to take University Park.
Oh, ma'am, I, actually...
Weekend.
Actually, I did have a question, since we're kind of on this topic as well.
Because we have order, though. Just, excuse me, excuse me, order, can she make her presentation? You have a question.
Uh, yeah, actually it was about the, uh, it was in regards to Ms. Riz's question. Um, how come she couldn't use, uh, the Will Ride program in regards?
What is that? What is Will Ride?
It's, uh, what is Will? It's a, a program offered by Pace.
She's about to do.
But, uh, maybe it's that be part of...
Hold on, just a second. Point of order, point of order, everyone, just let's, excuse me, trustee, can she, trustee?
Um, that was actually my next, um, point.
If she can do her, her presentation first and then anyone that has a question afterwards, then please address it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, so, again, mostly for, uh, the resident who spoke, I wanted to make sure I answered her before you left. Um, there are multiple Dial-A-Ride services that are available through Pace that are being operated by townships, municipalities, um, communities where they are taking up that area that we can't provide service through paratransit. Um, so it would be advantageous to you to call Pace and not contact the village and let us see if you can give us a, a point A to point B and if we can try and see what services might work best for you, whether they...
I've never contacted the village.
Oh, ma'am, that's, that's okay. She's, that's okay.
Um, so, it would be a good idea to maybe contact Pace and let us know the times you want to travel as well, because that sometimes determines what service is available. Um, let us know your point A and point B and then we can try and determine what services might fit, fit your trip best. That would probably be what you should do if you have not done so.
Okay.
Um, uh, one other thing is I do present at Thornwood House occasionally, so if you see an event coming up where Pace is there, I encourage you to come. Um, I do know that there are limited trips into Thornwood House on Route 367. Um, right now, this is, again, the exact reason why I'm here, because, um, you know, Pace is facing the same funding constraints that all units of government are facing, where we do a little bit more with less every year. And the community vehicle program that I'm going to give information on is part of where we ask our community partners to partner with Pace to help provide some service where we're not able to provide, um, the levels of service we know may be needed in the community. Um, so that's what I'm presenting on tonight, just, um, so it does really, um, speak directly to some of the concerns you have. Absolutely. And they're not concerns we don't know. Um, there are many areas, once you start leaving what used to be the main business district of Chicago, um, when you look at public transit, that was, in all honesty, designed back, um, well before many of us were here, um, we have to look at restructuring and start servicing areas that maybe didn't have service in the past. Um, our collar counties, which we consider Will, Kane County, Lake County, those kind of areas are still developing and there's maybe not so much a need for a 40-foot large vehicle to be operating daily. Um, so I'm here today to talk about the community vehicle program. Um, and this is a vehicle program that is available to units of government only to, again, partner with Pace to provide that level of transportation that maybe isn't there yet, um, but that the community maybe identifies that there is somewhat of a need. Um, I wanted to just bring some examples of some of your, um, community, uh, neighbors who participate in these pro, this exact program, um, just so you have a reference that there are other communities that have been very successful with it. Um, Country Club Hills, Calumet Township, Bremen Township, Hazel Crest, City of Markham, Oak Forest, Steger, South Chicago Heights, Chicago Heights Park District, Dalton Park District, Riverdale Park District, and Thornton Township is right in the pipeline to get their new vehicle as well. So, again, these are areas where we might have some traditional, regular public transit, but we just don't have the resources to provide service to every person at every time of the day, as we would ultimately love to do if we had those resources available to us. Um, so, this community vehicle program not only allows you to partner with Pace, but it provides the community the direct option to design that service how you see fit. Um, I will give you an example, uh, Village of Steger, when they started theirs, they identified their need was mainly for their senior residents who could not get to certain locations in their surrounding area and that's how they designed their community vehicle program. Um, I did start these discussions with Mayor Covington in 2011, I think maybe two months after you took office. Um, we had sat down and really discussed the program and the benefits to, um, the community. Um, over the last few years, I have come out, I know I came to a Saturday workshop in snowy February and gave the information and answered some questions. Uh, we actually brought one of our vans out here a few years ago for, um, the board and everyone to take a look at. Um, we just unfortunately haven't really had a board consensus on this program, um, as of yet, so we're hoping we can, we can start that conversation again. Um, and it happens very frequently when you have changes in administration and you have changes in elected officials, sometimes programs stall and we just take it back up again and hope that it can, it's at the right time.
But how long have I tried to give this?
Since 2011.
Seven years.
Um, and every year, we send the paperwork back about twice a year. Um, the nice thing about, uh, what we've developed over the last few years was, and that's why you have those packets of information in front of you, not only do you have a community vehicle program packet, but you have your existing service and your existing Dial-A-Ride services. The, our understanding was that University Park wanted to not overlay what's existing, but take up the areas that we can't get to, um, or that we, you know, infrastructure doesn't always support a 40-foot bus. Um, even Thornwood House, we have had our issues with, um, destroying that private property that at any time they can tell us to get off of, um, we're there at their discretion. Um, and, and we're very thankful to that, uh, and that they actually handled all of the repairs themselves in their parking lot and repaved it for us. Um, but again, saying that, adding more service is really just adding more cost that we just don't have, uh, in 2018. Um, we don't have more buses to put on the road and we, you know, we're operated through sales tax revenue and if you're from the state, Amazon is just taking all of our sales tax. So, um, we're in, again, the same kind of buying to most units of government are and, um, w- we're here just to, again, ask if this is something that the village would want to move forward with. Um, and if so, we are happy to start sending that paperwork over again. Um, you know, we had started the, the shelter program under Mayor Covington, it was very successful and, and back when we had started the even conversations of, of putting advertising shelters in, which I'm not sure if the public knows, the village receives revenue from those shelters.
Yes.
So, although we have seen revenue decline, because as we all know in this digital age, um, static, uh, advertising i- is dying out a little bit, um, it still does bring free revenue. Pace pays for those concrete pads, we pay for the shelters and we pay for all the advertising and the upkeep of them. Um, and the village has been an extremely good partner with us on those.
Thank you.
You're, you're welcome. Thank you. And the, I think the goal at the beginning of those conversations was to use that revenue to help offset the cost. So, the, the bare bones cost of a community vehicle program, once you start it, it's a hundred dollars a month per vehicle. That's your cost. You pay it to PACE and you set your guidelines. You set where you go, you set where you operate, you set where you don't go, you set the days you don't operate. All of that is handled well before you start your program. We, we sign off on everything. We even sign off on what you're going to charge your residents to make sure that we're okay with that. Um, there are two different types of vehicles, a bus program and a van program, depending on what you're looking for. All vehicles are lift-equipped, as they must be if you're servicing your general public. Um, again, the nice part of this program is that you are allowed to design it as you see fit. Um, many, many years ago, Mayor and one of the staff that is no longer, I believe, with the, the village, had come up with a bus route, a schedule, um, ideas on how they could purchase tickets in Village Hall so that drivers weren't carrying anything. Um, it, it really is kind of ready to go, maybe with a little tweaks based on maybe some new economic development coming in. Um, I will say as well, even the industrial park, PACE is going to have a very difficult time servicing that as it was not built with transit supportive guidelines for 40-foot bus turnarounds, no sidewalks, no crosswalks, traffic signals. So, that has happened very recently in these years where, um, development's going up without transit in mind. When that happens, the community vehicle program is a way that the community can still get individuals that last mile. We call it a last mile, first mile connection where maybe you can get into the metro, but how do you get further west from the metro station into that industrial park? And this is that key that we look for, um, for assistance with our community. Um, it is a thousand dollar deposit per vehicle and it is actually refundable based on the condition of your vehicle, when, when and if you choose to return it. Um, we do ask that you do start a bit small and then you can always add vehicles on as time goes by. Um, back in 2011, the startup timeline was about three months. We're about six months now. That's about the startup timeline, um, with the paperwork. It is a lot of paperwork.
Mary's still over it?
Mary is still there. She is ready whenever I'm, she's waiting for me to say the go-ahead again. Um, I am happy to entertain any questions about the program. I know this is not a new conversation, um, so I, I'm happy to entertain any questions you might have.
Okay. I'm sorry, trustee.
Yeah, uh, could you go over the, uh, Will County, uh, Will Ride program?
Yes, sir. So, um, Will Ride, and actually what I'm going to do is just give this young lady my brochure. So, dial-a-rides that operate in our areas are services that are being provided by the townships, by the communities, by units of government themselves.
I got their number, they don't do it. No, I got them, but that one is in my office. Oh, if they work in a different way?
They're all different. Um, so what Will Ride is, is a part, something that Will County was trying to do for many years was consolidate services. So you had, um, traditionally in Cook County, you'll see Rich Township, Bloom Township, Bremen Township. You see these kind of scattered, uh, dial-a-ride services, and that's typically because in Cook County, fixed route service is there, paratransit is more prevalent and readily available because of fixed route service being operational. Once you start going into Will County, we had these, years ago, we had a Crete Township dial-a-ride, a Moni Township dial-a-ride. So what happened was, these townships came together and consolidated funding for Will Ride. That's all that is. You're taking multiple townships that were operating multiple different services, they weren't connecting together, and they all consolidated their funding and, and created something called Will Ride. That's what that is. Um, there are other services in Will County that are on the east side of Will County, west side of Will County, central Will. There are different services, but this is the one that is in this region for Crete and Moni Township.
Uh, could you tell me what the service area is for the, uh, Will Ride program?
For Will Ride? Sure. There are multiple townships on Will Ride. Oh, they gave me a fantastic map. Green Garden Township, Moni Township, Crete Township, Peatown Township, Will Township, Washington Township. They also service locations within a 10-mile radius of the borders of their six-county township.
Oh, okay. Would that include their Richmond Park train station?
The Richmond Park? That would be in Rich Township.
Yeah, but that's, uh, within.
They would need to, they would need to call and request that.
That'd be within 10 miles of, uh, Moni Township, isn't that correct?
They would need to call and ask if they can be provided that service. Now, I want to also clarify, paratransit service, that is a service that's federally mandated. If you are registered for that service and it's within a service area, we must provide that service. PACE provides about 20,000 trips on paratransit daily. It's a lot of trips.
Right.
Dial-a.
Yeah, I guess, guess.
Dial-a-rides are on demand, so if they fill up, they fill up. It's a first-come, first-served basis. They are doing the best they can with their limited resources as well. We have had some issues actually on more the west side of Will County with the Joliet area. They fill up within five minutes of calling to schedule rides. It's, they, they don't have the funds to add more vehicles. The more vehicles they add, the more contractual costs. Um, areas like Rich Township dial-a-ride, they actually run a trapeze system to schedule their rides, which is what we use for paratransit. So, the larger you go, the more it's gonna cost. Um, one of the biggest issues we see, I think, with, um, both paratransit and even dial-a-ride is the lack of Sunday service. Um, and I, and I've been posed that question many times and my response is, those townships are just like any other unit of government. When you put service on the road on Sunday, you have to pay people on Sunday, and that's more money from the taxpayers to pay for that service. So, one thing I always recommend to anybody, whatever service you're using at PACE, if you have a suggestion about more service needs, you need to call and give that to us. And we need specifics, what time you want to travel and where you want to go. It's the only way we can help when we do have those resources to restructure at some time, to take those, that feedback and incorporate it into restructuring plans.
Uh, yes, so, just to answer my point to try and help out Ms. Riz here, if you ever need a ride between, on Monday through Friday, between eight and five, to the Richmond Park train station, you just dial the Will Ride service at 1-800-244-4410, and they will be more than happy to take you there because that is within.
How much will they be charging for me to take you?
I'll be, uh, four dollars, according to the brochure.
Tell me the brochure.
Looking at it, it says it's a $2 one-way, $4 round trip for rides within your township. So, University Park would now be considered, I'll be trying, I'll.
Correct.
I wanted to have a ride from, uh, one Thornwood Mall to Richmond Park Metro Station.
So you want to go outside your township, so it'll be $4 each way?
Right.
Correct, yes.
Okay. Um, now, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Yes, ma'am.
Trustee Wilson.
Since we have the PACE shelters that we get revenue from, would it be possible to use part of that funding to?
Oh, my God.
Minimize the cost for the seniors? So instead of $4 one-way or $8 round trip when it's outside your township, then we could reduce their cost by using the funds that we get for just having a PACE shelter?
So, you can use those funds. Once that check goes to University Park, those are your funds to use. Those are your funds. We don't restrict how you utilize them, um, at all. Once you get the check, it, we hope you cash it.
I'm sorry, she has another question and then you can have.
That's the normal charge for PACE transportation anyway. It's $3.25, thank you.
Excuse me.
For paratrans.
Wait just a second, just let her.
Basically, you take the pay. And then, hey, it's still not that expensive.
Oh, so.
And then I have another question.
Go ahead, excuse me, order, wait a minute, let her answer. Ms. Riz, let her finish, please.
Excuse me, I was, uh, soon as, soon as I finish my second question, soon as I finish my second question, anybody else, mayor, that you recognize can go ahead. Um, my second question was, so you said in the past you guys had worked out routes, et cetera? So you guys would help us work out routes and the needs of the residents?
I'm gonna speak, I'll speak to that. Okay, I'm sorry. Ms. Nip, Ms., uh, I'm sorry.
Richard.
Richard, I'm sorry.
Have you ever did a survey with business operation needs from Joliet or the community?
So we do community services, um, community service index surveys quite frequently. One thing I recommend if you are a PACE rider.
I'm just saying, survey the community, basically because there's a lot of.
Sure.
Residents out here.
Sure.
They have to go and take care of businesses in Joliet.
Absolutely, so.
And they don't have the transportation to get here.
Sure. So, one thing I recommend, if you're a PACE user, that you check our website very frequently or call our information line.
Not just PACE.
Oh, I will not speak to anyone but PACE, um, but we do, um, community surveys where we ask you to go on, uh, on the website and take a, a community survey. Um, we ourselves will conduct surveys. I'm working on a survey right now with, um, a relocation of a hospital, um, on what the needs are.
Oh, yeah, oh, my God, that vision.
We also, we watch our census data, we're watching, um, where employment opportunities go. A good example is when Amazon decided to build in the middle of nowhere. Um, Amazon pays for those bus routes that go from Harvey to Moni and Harvey to Joliet. Um, and that was something that the South suburban managers in that region tasked them to do. Um, so, from a PACE standpoint, we do, we do multiple surveys multiple times.
Ms. Williams?
I was gonna say, it, it sounds great and, um, I'm thinking about our industrial park, so this would be a great way of servicing our many residents who have to go in and out of industrial park, because I hear a lot of them have to do schoolwork and live now. So this would be ideal for them and I think this would be an excellent service to our community.
And just to, to, uh, speak to trustee Wilson, um, as Jessica said, we were, I had addressed this when I became mayor because there's been a lot of complaints. I used to take the metro myself over 10, 15 years and to let you know, it was after hours, after seven o'clock, University Park does not have any transportation, and then on Saturdays and Sundays. So, being the position that I had, I took advantage of that, I met with them, PACE, I went to actually Washington, um, Township and talked to them. That was on one of my tours that I found out about this service. And then I asked the question, our shelters were so inadequate and old, I said, is there anything we could possibly do? And Jessica said, sure, you have not because you asked not. I asked for the shelters, they built new shelters for us, they put in advertisement, and I asked at that time that we earmark all those dollars to be set aside for this program and this program only. We brought a tour of the bus here to show it to the residents and, at that time, a different board, and they said that they would maintain it, they would train the people on to drive it, and then I said, this is a great, this is a win-win situation. So with that said, we would take the money that we got from the advertisement, and they came and they put, and I asked them to put garbage cans on it, and it's, this, it's very disgusting, the fact that as soon as they came in there, people start busting the windows, the glass, but they were so kind enough to come out, every time they were bust and broken, they would come and repair them. Because I even, in the storm rain, I saw it, I was so embarrassed and hurt, I cleaned it up myself. The police officer right back there stopped and said, what are you doing? I said, this is embarrassing. We get something like this and this is what you do, you tear it up. So they do graffiti, they come out right away and clean it up, but my thing is I wanted service for the residents of University Park. We did do a survey with industrial park and we were trying to work, and the lady that was working with this, she had a beautiful packet, she showed the routes after seven o'clock, we would pick it up after PACE, after seven till two o'clock in the morning, because that's when PACE, uh, Metro would stop, they would have people to take this, and with the thousand dollars we were getting, at that time, we were getting checks that's much as $14,000 in a year, and we were gonna set that aside and use that for two buses. We were gonna try a star pilot program with two buses, and industrial park was happy as ever for that. And they said, I said, so what we do, we work with our collector, they would buy passes so we wouldn't have money exchanging, so that way the people can get a ride and the kids could get and have their summer school work or after-school jobs, they could get, connect this way, and the other one would go to Park for this, the other one would go Park for us, and the other one would go to Matson. Either way, they had a connection out of University Park, and some of us, at the times if our car broke down, there was transportation 24 hours, seven days a week from University Park. And with that said, we thought that was a great work, thing, workaround for everyone. Industrial Park wanted it, the village residents wanted it, board did not vote for it. And that was years ago, as Jessica said, seven years ago, so I'm back with it again because I'm determined to give service to the village of University Park and our residents, they are own this, they're do this. This is what they supposed to do. We're supposed to have this bus service and it can pay for itself. And then we figured with the fees, they already told us also, we can design our own stop signs. They gave us everything we need to do to work this. But I'm hoping and I'm knowing, I have faith in this board that we have today, that they will execute this and we will move it out so people in Thornwood House can have it and we can always, as she said, alter it. We can say, okay, we're gonna dedicate one bus just for the seniors to doctor's appointments or whatever they need, special needs. We would do that, and the other one would go back and forth to government, state, and all around. So, I'm hoping that this is something, now, I've already got the paperwork still, still brushed it off, kept it, and I've talked to Mary and Jessica and brought this back to transportation when she came to transportation meeting and I was there. So they're willing to give us another shot. Unfortunately, instead of three months, it's gonna take six months to get it done. But I know and I have faith in this board because they want to see movement, they want to see progress with this village, and we're going to make this happen. So with, that's to give you the history of it, we still have some of the paperwork there. I'm hoping that it'll, I'll show it to you again and we can move forward and give some service to the village and University Park residents. Any others? Trustee?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, I, I understand that you're working with other communities. Could you provide us with the subsidies that the, um, other communities and townships, uh, expend on the, uh, operation of their bus service? Because I find it hard to, to believe that it pays for itself. I, I know the buses, the rental is cheap, but, uh, if, if you're talking about paying drivers and insurance and maintenance and everything else, I'd like to know.
Sure.
What that deficit is that they're subsidizing.
So, it's a good question because, yes, it's a, it's a bare-bones cost of a hundred a month, of course, but there's, of course, gonna be additional, uh, possible costs that come along with any program that you start, personnel costs, insurance costs. Um, you know, a good example is maybe a community like Country Club Hills where they actually formed, and they don't just use PACE vehicles, they had actually procured some IDOT vehicles. So theirs is a bit larger. Um, they opened up a dispatch office, they take reservations, they have a reservationist, as opposed to maybe Oak Forest that runs it out of their clerk's office. So every community is very different on how they operate, how far they operate, um, who they're gonna provide service to in the community. So it's, it's really, it's a hard question to answer definitively. I, I will, one thing I would recommend is what many communities have done in the past, they've reached directly out to that community and asked, what is your program running every year? Some years are gonna be different. Um, Rich Township themselves actually cut back some of the service they were operating, um, because they couldn't afford to, to take their trips to Chicago anymore, they just couldn't do it. Um, so, uh, they were sending some trips to Chicago from Rich Township, just to try and accommodate our residents' request, um, and they had to even cut back a little bit. Um, so I think it depends on the community, how many vehicles they have. I've had some park districts who start out very big, when we try and encourage them not to, then they give back vehicles because it's just costing too much and it's just, and then it's just sitting there unused, which we don't want. We want our vehicles on the road. Um, I am more than happy to send over to the mayor some contacts at the communities that we've used in the past, who are, who are o- open to sharing that information with you, um, who are happy to talk with other communities about how successful it's been and what their experience has been with the program and what they see that their costs are.
Okay, so you don't have that data yourself?
They would all be different. Those costs are on them when.
Yeah, I understand it's different, but you.
They don't need to, unless it goes through audit, when we audit their files, and audit would never give that information to me.
Okay.
That's someone's, that's their finance records, that, and that's something that they have, that's part of the program requirements is you keep your records, so when we audit, um, we can come in and get those from you. Um, I don't know that I'd even be comfortable sharing another community's information, but I do have communities that are very open, like Country Club Hills and Oak Forest and Rich Township, who have always been, have done it for the last eight years for me, they talk to other communities and have kind of assisted them with an idea of, of how many vehicles are you running and what does it cost you and how far do you go? And how many hours do you operate? How many people do you have? Um, I even have some communities that their public works is who runs it because they already have vehicles, they already have staff, they don't need to add staff.
Right.
They're just, they're already there.
Right. And, and in our previous discussion with the board about this, this issue, I want to say it was a couple, couple, three months ago, maybe three or four months ago, uh, we said that we wanted to do a survey, uh, and you indicated that you do surveys.
We have done community surveys before, correct.
Okay, is that something you'd be willing to?
We sent you the one eight years ago to use, yes, absolutely. We will create it.
To use but not to conduct it?
No, we would conduct a PACE survey.
Right.
About PACE service. However, we will create it and get it, we did that with Steger. Um, we created everything for them, um, we even took the data back, we offered to, to get the data for them, but they just chose to do it themselves.
And, and just for the record, uh, because, you know, we're talking about going to the
industrial park, the last survey that was done on the University Park residents that were working in the industrial park, there were six. So, you know, if we're talking about subsidizing that, they're getting the work somehow right now, so, you know, if we're talking about subsidizing that effort, then we need to maybe work with the companies on that.
Right. And we did do a, trustee Peyton, we did do a survey that Jessica provided for us, but the other thing that, when we did the survey, uh, a little preliminary survey, what industrial park did, what they were interested in, they were saying they had a lot of their, um, people coming from the metro, from Chicago and other areas, and they couldn't get from, um, University Park back there. So that was a money, it wasn't just people from University Park, it was some people that they were working, and that would've been, uh, was a, quite a few people, a few hundreds.
Well, my thing, Mayor, is we shouldn't be subsidizing people that are coming from Chicago and other communities. Our residents shouldn't have to subsidize their transportation. They're getting there somewhere now, you know, so-
But that's not the main-
Rent them a bicycle, get them a share a ride, bikes type thing, segways.
Yeah, but the main reason was for our residents, our seniors here. So we were massaging it down because first we thought it would be twenty-four hours. Then we cut it down to just have to subsidize what they did. So it's a work in process, but we're not trying to subsidize anyone else. We're just trying to help the community, people. And a lot of, I've given rise from people coming from Metro at eleven o'clock at night and they can't get here and they said the cabs are just unbelievable. They're charging them, they're literally raping them financially when they come from the metro station to their homes right here. So I'm sorry, Ms. Williams?
I was gonna say that I, I have a friend that works for Clorox. And they indicated there are a lot of University Park residents that work for Clorox. But their biggest issue is they don't have the transportation to get back and forth there. But there's a lot of people now from UP that work for Clorox.
Yeah, we, since we've gotten Clorox and some other companies back there now, we need to do an updated survey of how many people we actually have there. They're supposed to be doing that on a quarterly basis.
When we met with Clorox, because it's part of their TIF agreement for employment, and I wanna say the, the number was less than ten. University Park residents that work there.
Was that this year?
It was, yeah, last year.
Last year, yes, okay. Yeah, they just had a big hiring, yeah.
Yes, there are a lot of people working there now.
How, how are they getting there now? How are they getting to Clorox now?
They've been using Uber and Lyft.
They've been using what?
Uber and Lyft.
Oh, okay.
Okay, Ms., I'm sorry.
Trustee Peyton, the people we pick up at the metro, don't they have to pay to ride the bus? Isn't that revenue structure?
Yes, they will have to ride the bus.
Wouldn't they have to pay?
Yeah, we have filtered in something like that.
Yeah, they, they have to, to pay. But the question I have is total revenue versus total cost.
I'm just saying, they would have to pay.
Yeah, sure. You know, and they would pay us, what, three, three dollars and fifty cent a ride, four dollars, four fifty? And you run, you, you know, the original proposal was to run it seven days a week, twenty-four hours a day. So how many times are the residents from University Park gonna go from University Park home or home to university, to the train station? That's why, that's why I believe we need a survey to determine, to make a factual decision on the economics of the thing.
Oh, yeah, that's, that's why she's here now. We're gonna totally change and, and look at it differently. And a lot of, like I said, three companies since seven years have built in University Park, Industrial Park, and our residents are working, some of them are working there. Yes, Ms. Mauro? And we're gonna wrap it up.
The thousand dollar deposit for this vehicle, so we're not purchasing the vehicle.
No.
We're paying a thousand dollar deposit for the use of the vehicle. But then we have, we have to pay for the maintenance of the vehicle.
Depends on what, depends on what program you choose. Um, if you choose the program that utilizes a bus, the maintenance cost is on the village. If you choose the program with the vans, the cost is to Pace, we pay for maintenance.
That's the one we were gonna change. And the beautiful part of it too, it says, it will still say it's Pace, but we will have ownership, it will give us identity, it would say on the buses, University Park. So that was a nice tweak because I noticed the other buses do have whatever municipality. They do put their village logo on the buses though, to let you know that belongs to University Park. Okay, so we will, this is just workshop, we're gonna start, we'll do the survey, we'll do all the homework.
My plan is to go ahead and have Mary in the next few days resend fresh paperwork.
Okay.
Um, with all twenty eighteen, I'm sure we'll go into twenty nineteen if you move forward.
Okay.
Um, and then start from there. And if you want to redo the schedule or reissue a survey, the one we created would've been the same thing we probably issue now. What times do you travel, where do you come from? Um, we're happy to work with you on that.
Thank you, one more last question?
The reason for it to be updated is because we have so many residents that have exited out of the community.
Right.
So we have new residents that have entered here. So we need to identify those as victims.
Right, exactly. We will do that. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. And also, this is the year, um, I've had a meeting, someone just had in my office for censors, it's time for the censors to be done again. So I'll be reaching out to people for volunteers that might be interested in doing the censors for twenty twenty? Census, I'm sorry, census, census, oh. Okay, so look for that on our website, on our cable station as well. And last but not least, we have something that was not on the agenda. I'm gonna give it from my time to Speedway. That was supposed to be on the agenda for whatever reason they didn't get there. But it's just a proposal, an idea that they would like to share with the Village of University Park. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, thank you and, and for the trustees, I appreciate your time this evening. Some of you may have, some of you may have seen this presentation.
Wait just a second, can we hear, we need to hear this presentation, please, okay.
Uh, some of you may have seen this presentation come through earlier today. We were asked to send this over a little bit earlier. But this is our proposal to change out our current alcohol license and exchange that for, which is currently off premise, and change that to a combination license to pursue video gaming in our store as well. Um, and I just wanted, I guess, initially open that up if anyone has any questions or wanted to talk that through. We're happy to go through this in more detail. Um, I just don't wanna touch on the same thing if, if everyone's kinda looked this through already, so.
We just received this from you.
Right. We just, the-
We haven't seen it.
The board just received it, so for the community's sake and for the board's sake, if you can give a summary?
Yeah, no problem. So, um, as you can see, I'm actually gonna have you flip over to the last two pages. Um, and these are two different layouts that we're, we're looking at. So what we'd like to do again, as I mentioned, change that to a combination alcohol license. And we're still pending, um, at the bottom here, I have pending Speedway, our economics and the IGB approval on, on the layout of the site. Um, we're looking at both an internal and just a, a back bump out of our building. Um, I know there's been some questions out there with, with site enhancements. Um, and, and I do touch on that a little bit in here. So what we're, um, I, I think some of the things that were talked about were restrooms, healthier food options. Um, and all of that, we're, we're looking to address. And I, again, I don't wanna like steer anyone in the wrong direction as, as to, I, I know there were some conversations about, um, uh, yes, please, I'm sorry, thank you, okay. Good call. Yeah, and just to be clear, we're talking about the address two zero zero one University Parkway. And that's Speedway's, um, a Speedway store. Yeah, go ahead.
No, that's the Speedway there?
Yeah, correct.
Probably, uh, probably University?
Correct, that's correct.
No, it's not, Western, yeah?
Yeah, yep. Um, so a couple of things that we are looking to do at this particular store. Um, we are, we are looking to add some, some of the healthier food options. I know that was a, a conversation that if we're gonna have people playing games, that we just have a different variety. So we've worked, we've taken that back and have worked with our marketing department. And how we proceed here, we are moving forward with changing out some of our, our planogrammed items in our store. Um, just to, we know that the college is nearby and, and wanna support, you know, the healthier food option. Um, there's been some comments regarding, uh, the restrooms at the store as well. And that's another piece that we would, um, the challenge is we're dealing with an old building that's been around for a while. Um, there is, just like any store that we build, we, uh, or that we, we currently own, we are continually doing evaluation of our economics, if we would rebuild that site or remodel that site. Um, the more money we would invest into an existing older asset store, the longer it is to, to hurdle those economics to rebuild. Um, so the way our company operates is we're, we're looking to add dollars essentially to the store to help, um, overcome some of those additional costs that we'd incur. And then obviously with the ultimate intention down the road that, you know, this would be a candidate for a rebuild. And I'll, I'll tell you, that's something that, um, Madam Mayor and our, our group were talking about that, uh, last week I believe, um, that we are going through that economic process that, that we do, just like any company does. Is it, is it worth the investment to do a rebuild? Is it financially viable to do something like that? And we're currently in that process, but, so I, I can't make any guarantees today where we're at and what we can do from, from a rebuild. But I, I can say that, um, we, we wanna be in University Park. We wanna continue to grow our business, be competitive with video gaming as others in the community and other communities around University Park do have. With Speedway, yeah, and with Speedway in general, we have, currently we have eleven other locations offering video gaming. Uh, and we're pursuing a handful of others as well. And, um, we're, we're being strategic and we're trying to be responsible with where we're adding that. And, and we feel that this would be a good store for us to do so. Um, as, as kind of alluded to earlier, we're, we're talking one of our two stores in University Park. And, um, and it's the one, uh, that we were just referencing up by the, the university. Um, so that's, that's where we're at today. So again, our, our proposal is to add, um, change out our alcohol license with a combination license and add video gaming to our site.
So, so were you also talking, you said you bump out the building? Are you talking about putting in a little expansion on the building?
So that is one of our options. All of our other, yeah, all of our other buildings that we do have, um, it's an internal room. So, and it's a half wall. And it's a, today what we have is a locked door. So it's ID'd by, no one can enter that unless you're ID'd. No one could drink alcohol unless you're ID'd. And we have internal processes where we would track and monitor all that stuff. Um, but our, our preference as of today is an internal half wall just from a, um, once we're, once you go out of the back of the building, which we, we're open to doing and, and are considering that. But then it's a separate room, it's a separate building, and it's just from a security and safety perspective. We just wanna make sure that we can see and the IGB also has to approve that layout. So that's why we listed both options because at this point, we don't know what we would be approved for. And they obviously are gonna have a, a say in, in that approval process. Um, so again, we're looking at both options.
Hey, Matt.
Yeah?
No, thank you for your presentation tonight. Um, I sat in on an initial, um, conversation with you guys and I really appreciate you coming back and sharing this with the village. Um, one of the concerns that I had, if, if we're gonna add something like this, I just want to make sure that considering that we have two stores, two, two, two Speedway stores here, one on Western and one next to the metro station, right? And you consider the one next to the metro station. And I've looked at this right here and I, and I looked at the build out that, that we talked about. But initially during that meeting, I, I brought up some concerns that I had personally above and beyond, um, uh, this gaming center that's, that, that you propose. Um, the, the, the store itself, you know, is sort of dated. And I suggested that, well, maybe we should, and even Madam Mayor chimed in on that too as well, that, uh, it should be far more appealing than it is now. I don't know circa what year that was, uh, that store was built, but it has been dated. And you said you have to go back to your, uh, upper echelon executives and kick around the cost effectiveness of, of rebuilding and making some changes to that structure, right? And I initially said that one of the things that I wanted to see done even before this evening came up, because I had talked with management on, on that level, on the management level at the store only. But now I got the executives staring me in the face, right? I just wanted to bring this to you guys. We wanted to reconstruct or even add new bathroom facilities to that, um, to that place. And also, Madam Mayor mentioned that she wanted to spruce up the place. She wanted to walk into that place and feel welcome. And I've, I've, I, I use your product quite a bit. In Indiana, I go to Speedway, any chance I get, I go to Speedway, right? And Madam Mayor mentioned in that meeting that maybe she, you know, you can walk in and you can feel welcome. So we have to make some cosmetic changes and-
So I could, I could definitely speak to that. And, and so from that initial meeting that you were at, I was not a part of that meeting, as you probably are aware. Um, I had a, we had a, um, local operations, a district manager in attendance. And once, once it kind of got into that, that process, so my title is Division Project Manager and I manage, um, all of our, our projects within the division. And we have about three hundred and sixty stores in our market. So we're looking at new builds, rebuilds, remodels. And really what it comes down to is our company operates currently in approximately twenty-seven states, if I recall correctly, twenty-seven hundred stores. And it's in the news, we're, we're, we're in a very large growth mode, um, soon to be forty-one hundred stores approximately. Um, and all of the projects, whether it's a remodel, a rebuild, a new build, have to go through an ROI process that is approved internally through our executive management team.
So where do we stand?
Yeah, so, and that's where, where I'm getting is every, every project is prioritized from a profitability perspective and, and what we think we can do within a market. So again, the asset that we have in this location, to, to knock it down and rebuild a multimillion dollar, we're talking-
I didn't say knock it down, I just said-
Yeah, I mean, from enhancements alone, again, the more, so we've, in the past, at this particular location, we've done checkout, our checkout remodel, counter remodel. We've added a lot of, um, different offerings, like, uh, food offerings for reel machines, um, different, like, just physical asset things that are in the store. Um, we, in order to be responsible with our money as a company, we, we try not to put money into a project that if we're planning to do something with long term, to, to go spend, I'm just gonna throw out a number, twenty-five, fifty thousand, whatever that number is, to redo restrooms and then knock all that down, that, that's not a good financial investment. Because if we did that at every store, we're in a different financial position as a company. So it, that is, is really challenging to do. We can do from a, a maintenance and, and upkeep, we can, we can definitely handle that. And that's stuff that's approved locally. But anything that would be an operating expense gets handled at a corporate level, at a higher level, um, than even, than even us here locally.
But it would be addressed, right, in terms of the, the washroom facilities, right?
We have no plans, we, we cannot expand or add stalls or anything like that at this particular site. When we do that, it's a, it's a full remodel, it's essentially a teardown and rebuild is, is how we, we- So I think we're thinking of the store up the street, which has, you know, you walk in and you have multiple stalls. You've seen those probably in Indiana.
Well, I'm not suggesting the stalls, but the, the way it is right now is substandard in, in terms of, you know, it being presentable to the public, you know, really.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah. I will say, I mean, we do meet all of our ADA compliant, you know, so we're, we're following the law to, to have a standard of a restroom. And we have internal programs that we try and maintain a clean restroom and understand that we fall, just like anyone does. But I will definitely continue to, to push that. And I, I can say that we are actively in the process of looking at what else we can do at this particular location. I've heard as of recent that, um, IDOT is looking to add a, a light at that intersection, if I'm understanding correctly. And that is a, that is a huge benefit to, to our type of business, which is convenience. So that's only gonna help.
We have some more questions right quick.
Yeah, um, man, I just, uh, and, and I'm pretty, pretty sure trustee McMullin probably asked about a thousand and one questions at the initial meeting. Because we both ran together and usually after we finished walking and knocking on doors, the first place Curtis wanted to go was Speedway, get his Red Bull. Um, just, just a quick question. I, I, I understand and I'm looking just briefly because it just came, you know, this was handed to me. Um, but in reference to that store, I just would just only express my point of view of more light. And I, I think I under, I think if Madam Mayor and I think, and trustee McMullin, I guess when they say inviting, um, I guess the question I would have is that when you do this update, and I know you, when you show this picture here, um, uh, if the trustees, I'm looking at page three.
Yep.
Um, I don't know if that's just a picture of a picture, um, but, you know, are, are you all planning on making, because the, the problem I only have with that Speedway is trustee McMullin may say it looks outdated, but I, my thing is, I guess, brightness. I guess that would be from a policeman point of view. I like to see lit up whenever I stopped at Speedway to get my midnight snack.
Absolutely, and, and I, I promise you from our, our company's perspective, that, that's what we want to. And safety is very important to not only our staff, but our customers. So we by no means want it, it to be an unsafe environment.
Right.
Um, and I, I'm, I'm being relatively vague here because they're, they're keeping in mind that how, you know, it's a, it's a very large company. So, um, we have corporate programs that roll out. Um, we're in the middle of updating all of our company's ID signs, LED signs exterior. If any store does not have an LED sign, it's on a list and it's prioritized. Next phase of that is interior lighting. So if there's any lighting that's not LED lighting, that gets updated. So it, you're spending to do one of these projects, millions and millions and millions of dollars and rolling that across the company and trying to pull from each of these buckets to, because there's a lot of stores, as, as you know, that fall in a very similar situation. So we're trying to continue to maintain and upgrade as a whole, our image and our brand. And, and that's why you see a lot of new stores popping up or remodels. This is the image that we are going to and, and that we would be looking for.
Okay, because I, I just wanna make a point for when it comes to my vote, that when it comes to something like this, I think any with trustee, you know, if we're gonna change any type of licensing, um, the residents here want to see improvement. And if they seen a Speedway with that image, I promise you, the board probably would not have a problem with what you're asking. Because that's like the biggest problem. People come to University Park, they say they're gonna do one thing, and then they give us something substandard and it's usually after the trustees give a vote.
And as I stated early on, even with the restrooms and, and at this point, we don't have any, the only thing we're looking to do is, is do this little, either a bump out exterior or interior. Um, and we can take and do, if there's, if it- And we can take into, if there's, if it's something is, hey, let's paint the entire interior a beige color. We can, we can look into doing stuff like that. I don't think, yeah, I, it's more cosmetic, but if we start talking that we're ripping up plumbing and electrical and moving electric boxes and, these stores, I mean, when, there's a lot more that goes into that, but...
Paint job will do well. This is a new thing out here.
Right.
Well, the truth is gone about this.
Yeah.
Trustee Wilson says she has something, and we're gonna wrap it up.
Absolutely.
Okay, I'm sorry. Thank you for the presentation. I kind of read it. You didn't read it, but, uh, thank you. So, what's the closest Speedway with a gaming sit, location, like what you're talking about?
That's a good question. I think the closest one to here, like Bedford Park, um...
Bedford Park, okay.
Bedford Park is pretty close to Central City, Little Springs.
If you can find out it and let the mayor or the village manager know.
Yeah.
Yeah, I have your suspicion.
And then the next question is, well, do you know how many of your 20, well, just the stores in Illinois, how many of them have a gaming center facility?
Right now, there's 11.
11?
Um, we've got 127 locations currently in Illinois, looking to hopefully get into the 20s with the number of gaming units that we've got. New builds will come along as well as Speedway, which we used to build.
Do the 11 you have all have alcohol?
No. Little Springs will be one of the first one that has alcohol for us. We've got four pending right now with IGU and alcohol. So, the great thing is there's SOP processes in place in order for everyone to be trained on how that works.
SOP from the village, standard operating position.
Procedures. And then my, my last question was, the, where, the drawing that you have where there's a bump out, that you extend beyond the building, is that gonna be a half wall or a full wall?
That would be a full, full wall.
Option two or one?
I, let me just, we're, it's drawn as a full wall.
Option two.
Yeah, it's drawn as a full wall. That has not been approved, so depending on how engineering works and if there's a cost savings to do that, and, and so essentially you just take up maybe the top half of that exterior wall, and then there, that could be an option two.
I would probably ask the board what happens.
Yeah.
Well, so, okay, because I'm, I'm looking at one entrance in, and it's a locked door. And if something happens inside these four closed walls, nobody can see anything except for the people that are in there.
Absolutely.
These are half doors in that, the other locations we have that are locked, so there's nothing in which you can...
And it's, and it's locked from, it's locked from the outside, so the inside you can, you can leave at free will.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, I mean, still though, I mean, if it's four women or one woman in there gaming, and a big guy comes in, because from this drawing, I can't see that it's a half wall.
Right.
Now, big guy comes in, it's one way in and one way out, he could block it, right?
If you, if you flip over, just, just for reference, it would be page, I think it's seven. This shows just a couple of examples that we currently have in some stores. So, you can see, and I, I've tried to take some pictures from different angles, so you can see the checkout, and then from the checkout, you can see the gaming, and it's a half wall with a door, so...
I did notice all those, but, but just like Trustee Brooks mentioned, we see one thing, and then after we vote on it, it's changed. And my, I would really be concerned with the full, four walls and one, one way in and one way out. And, and I know it could be a locked door, but still, that would be my concern if you do the bump out.
And to that point, we could talk to our fire department on that. Do you have an opinion on such a facility built, is that, is that security, is that fire issue?
I'm not sure if there'd be an egress door, I'm not...
Put a window and put you on top half.
Yeah, I'm, I'm sure there was...
A half wall with a window, a half wall.
Okay.
Could be a full wall with the top half, it's glass, or you know, flexi-glasses on it.
Or, or, or I, as a woman, I would prefer a half wall.
Okay.
I mean, if somebody locks a door and it's midnight, because you said I was talking about standing on two, and there's one other person in the store, they preoccupy, they might not be able to see. Or if you knock it down to the floor, a full window, I mean, a half window is not gonna help.
Yeah. Yeah, and, and, I mean, we've, we've talked, if we are ever gonna do that bump out separate room, as you were just alluding to, there'd have to be a camera with a monitor behind the register, so it's, it's, it's very visible. It would be different than a, a security camera system, it would directly be just to see what's happening there. But, I agree with you on, on the single door, doesn't, and that's why I mentioned, this is all pending approvals and, and there's a lot of safety that has, absolutely.
Okay.
Uh, Madam, just one quick question. What would it take to get the flavor phone at the Speedway over on the, on, by the, you know, by the university?
I will take that down and, and see what we can do.
Flavor?
You can pick like cherry vanilla.
Oh, but then, I don't know if they spoke on it, and this would be my only...
What you need is some gas pumps over there. Because half the time, I have to end up going to go low, because I'm not gonna wait until, you know, some of the lines go down.
And that, that's, that speaks to, a rebuild is, is very important.
But there's one thing, I don't know if you mentioned it right quick, they did say something, we were concerned about the food, and they did speak that they would have something, they are moving out, a lot of the subways out of their stores, and they would have something sort of like that, sort of a McDonald type of thing. It would be fresh foods, fresh wraps, restaurant deli area, that they would make fresh foods for.
And, and so that's what that cafe is, and that's something that, that comes with a cafe store.
It'll be food.
But we, I also put a picture on there, next to that, on page three, that all of our inline sets are being changed out from cookie cracker and, and chips, well, they're all gonna still be there, but the selection is gonna change and add a lot more healthier food options. So, this one that I illustrate here is called Recharge and Refuel. We have a Better For You section. So, there's a, there are fresh made sandwiches and, and good, like, good to go, fresh food stuff that we do have in, in our stores, definitely.
Great, thank you. So, I appreciate this and...
No problem.
Get back to you.
Thank you all, we appreciate your time.
Thank you. Okay, all right. Tonight, we lost our audience, but we really appreciate that. Okay, at this point, we're gonna, to adjourn, we're gonna go into, but before we adjourn, this is very, very important, um, I know, okay, yes, I would like to announce this. The Village of University Park Mayor and Board Trustees are discussing with Dr. Col, what does she pronounce her name?
Col, Col, Col.
Police Interim Superintendent for Crete Moni School District 201U, Wednesday, September 19th. And I know we have three, two other meetings, but this is the date that she selected. And it's September 19, 2018, 90 Center at 6:00 PM, residents come out and discuss Crete Moni District Reconstruction Plan for Educational Facilities, Coretta Scott Magnum School, Elementary School Reorganization, Athletic Facilities, Student Busing, Costs and Benefits. So, please, and understand, this board, as been said unrespectfully, as far as I'm concerned, and I won't take down to that, this board does not run another board. We have different policies, different understandings, but like I said earlier, it's different from the school, it's a different type of government. I don't know how the policies work, they don't know how ours works. They might have an idea, but it's totally different. So, sitting on another board that I have, which is library board, it is totally different from this one. So, everyone, understand, you can't tell us that we're, that elected officials aren't doing anything. We're bound by different ordinance and government. It's a different government. Everyone thinks it's the same. It is not the same. Because I can't go and run their government, and they can't come and run our government. And it's training that needs to be done. Their trustees are differently trained from our trustees. The president's different from my president. Being a president here is different from being a president there, totally. So, please understand, come out with your ideas. Our board will be here, they will be listening, and they will have comments as well. We do want to save our school, whichever way we can do it. And I'll say this, Trustee Mc, uh, Trustee Milton Payton talked with her, with me as well, some residents talked with me, I had other people in there, and she, and had some ideas for her, another remedy to the plan, never to lose our school in our village. We do not want to lose that, that is not financially and economically accessible at all. So, with that said, I will ask for adjournment.
Madam Mayor, could you mind if I make an announcement? I did want to make a comment about the school board.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, oh, you did, I'm sorry, go ahead.
As well, uh, look, although there's no one really here, but I would just make it now, I believe of us as a board of, or board of trustees ought to take a position in regards to the closing of Coretta Scott King. I can, know I can speak for myself, I'm personally against it. And I'm willing to do anything at all costs, including doing the legal research. Now, there was a time in University Park that we did, as a village, fight for the rights of residents in regards to Coretta Scott King, which is reason why there is a consent decree that you can still find on the Crete Moni website. So, even though we are a different board, and, you know, we cannot directly affect the closing of Coretta Scott King through a vote, we can take a stand as a Village of University Park. I have talked to the mayor about that, and we have discussed it. I'm sure it'll make it on an agenda shortly in regards to whether or not we as a village are, and what steps are we gonna take? Are we gonna allow, say, I believe it's Montana and Welch to invest their legal resources so I don't have to do this on my own? There are things that can be done and will be done, if, by, by me alone, but I believe we as a Village of University Park should do that as well. On another note, are you looking for a career? The International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers Local 9 is looking for trainees. That's the IBEW Local 9. And along with the Chicago Federation of Labor Workforce and Community Initiative. The CFL Workforce Community Initiative and IBEW Local 9 recruiting individuals interested in training and working as IBEW Local 9 trainees. The minimum starting pay is $20 per hour with full benefits and union membership. Register, register to attend an upcoming orientation session to be considered for the program. They have a description of job benefits and eligibility requirements on the flyer that I gave to the mayor to review, and I will also share this information as well. All eligible applicants are required to attend an orientation session. Requesting for upcoming sessions can be completed by contacting Dwight Battles at, or by calling 708-316-5663, or by emailing Mr. Battles at battles, B-A-T-T-L-E-S-D at cflwac dot ward. So, this is something that everybody should go and take advantage of. Madam Mayor, if it's at all possible, I did give a copy of this flyer to Madam Clerk, Madam Deputy Clerk, and I stay to be posted at Village Hall. And also, one of the requirements for this, you will have to get a CPL or CDL permit. And I have instructions attached to that flyer as well, so that flyer will be posted at Village Hall, along with the requirements to get a CPL. Uh, thank you very much, Madam Mayor.
No worries. Yes, sir. Uh, just a second.
Trustee?
Yeah, I just want to make one brief comment regarding the school board. The mayor and I met with the interim superintendent. And one of the things, you know, I hear, um, there's a lot of sensitivity about closing the existing building at Coretta Scott King. And, you know, if you remember, before the name change, it was the worst school in the district. Now, it's one of the best schools in the county and in the state. So, it's not the building, it's what goes on in the building. Our proposal to the interim superintendent was, is that they build a new Coretta Scott King school for our students. Our students deserve air conditioning and everything, there's no sense in pouring money down in a rathole, and when there's new technologies that need to be integrated into a new school, and keep the name the same.
That's right.
Coretta Scott King, and expand the, the international baccalaureate program to all those schools, because the real issue is quality education. It's not a building, and we need to realize that. And our kids deserve the best, and we need to have a new building.
Trustee McMullin?
I concur, my colleagues, about this school closing. Whatever we can do as an elected official, we're gonna do what we have to do to keep the school going and to think about that alternative, building a new school, that would be a wonderful thing, that'd be a wonderful, and our students do deserve that. My, my kids went to Coretta Scott King, and they went to the old Hickory, so we need to keep it going. I'd just like to thank everybody for coming out tonight, and one of the things I wanted to mention, this is the 17th anniversary of 9/11. And I want to acknowledge that because it affected the whole world, actually. And we've been relatively safe since then, but I would just like to acknowledge all of the families who were touched by 9/11 and that it will never, ever happen again. And I thank you for that. And number two, I'm very happy to see the residents come out and droves tonight as opposed to other village meetings, and this was, this is a step in the right direction, that I saw at least three residents from my own block here tonight. And I just noticed the rest of the seats were filled too, with residents above and beyond the usual suspects, they were here as well. And the last thing, we have an opportunity to utilize the new airport. We have a Young Eagles Rally Saturday at Boeuf Airfield. EAA Chapter 260, they are given free rides for, for, for students between the ages of eight and 17, Saturday at Boeuf Field in Monique, which is only approximately four miles from here. And if you want some exposure, and you want to see some planes, and you want to see some, some excitement around aviation, I think it's a good start. And I think we're gonna have great weather Saturday for the rest of the week. So, the last rally that happened was in May, and they took up approximately 28 students, they gave them free rides. So, if you want to participate, you can come out this Saturday at Boeuf Field between eight and two, two o'clock, and you can register and have your child go up and get the exposure to aviation. Airport is down the street. That is my comments for the week.
I'd also like to send prayers to all the first responders, all the families who were affected by 9/11, and, and I'd just like to, everybody keep those people in your memories. I'd also like to make an announcement that Human Services Special Events Committee will be working with Windstorm and doing the Soul She Row. It'll be a half marathon, 10K and 5K, hosted here in University Park on October 14th, 698 Burnham. It'll be an 8:00 AM start time, the, well, that'll start with a half K, then the 10K will be a little later, and then a little later after that will be the 5K. So, please go to www.soulsherow.com to register and sign up, and then you can also see, hopefully you'll be able to see the information on the cable station pretty soon. Again, you can go to www.soulsherow.com to register and to find out all the information and details on the Soul She Row Half Marathon, 10K and 5K Walk Run. Also, Human Services Special Events has a, a lot of events planned for, for the upcoming, the next 12 months. We are still looking for volunteers. The next meeting will be, the chairperson left?
I think it's next, next Tuesday, or Thursday.
Next, next Thursday.
Next week.
Oh, good, thank you.
And that's next Thursday, September 20th, right here at the Town Center at 7:00. So, all are welcome to join us and give us your ideas and, and sign up to be on some of these subcommittees. Thank you.
Um, just thank you all for coming tonight. Some people are more adamant than others, and we respect them and we appreciate them. But I always say, it's a short, sweet scripture. What we do unto others, what you do unto others, will be done unto you. So, treat people the way you like to be treated. Do unto others as you have them to do unto you, excuse me. Okay, tonight is a night that I would like to read, that I sent something on this day. 17 years ago, our country suffered loss and devastation due to the attack of the World Trade Center, which you've heard, and the Pentagon... Trade Center, which you've heard, and the Pentagon and Pennsylvania Field. Today we stand in solidarity, as we, as many of our country still mourn for the loss of their loved ones, in honor of September 11, National Day of Service, and a remembrance I have, I can't say, I just, well, I put this part on there, I sent this email out to our police and fire department, that I did my traditional salute to them today. And I love them, I appreciate them, God bless them, and thank you, Chief Chelios, for your response. And also, you will see listings that I have, Hazel Crest will be hosting a Health Labor, Healthy Day, I'll share that with our cable station. I know Red Tails will be hosting something in Richardson Park, and again, University Park has been honored as, what was that again, from Chamber 57?
Partner of the Year.
Partner of the Year Award. So, I'm happy that University Park is being recognized, and we are being recognized, things are being done, we have never had so much recognition, good or bad or ugly, we're still there, we're still being recognized, that we are doing something. I, again, and I will never stop giving kudos to this board for working with me, making things happen, and remember, people, don't be a human garbage can, do not allow people to trash and deposit to you, think for yourselves, research and understand and then look at it, because it is an election year, and it's ugly, and I am just appalled at some of the things that's being done out there, we don't trash each other. I'll say that again, do unto others as you have them to do unto you. I will ask for an adjournment for us to go into executive session. Move by trustee, the purpose is adjourned?
The purpose is for pending, pending and threatened litigation.
Thank you very much. And now, oh, I'm sorry, is there a second? Second, my trustee Brooks, roll call. He's been gone a long time, sir. Trustee Wilson. He didn't know it was been paid. Trustee McMullin.
Hold on.
Trustee Payton.
Aye.
Trustee Oscar Brown.
Aye.
Mayor Cuthbert.
Aye.
All right.